Royal Commission, inter violence, abuse, neglect and exploitation of people with disability is now in session.
Good morning, everyone who is following or participating in this hearing. This is the fifth day of Public Hearing Seventeen Part Two on the experiences of women and girls with disability, with a particular focus on family, domestic and sexual violence. I shall now invite Commissioner Mason to make the acknowledgement of the country.
Thank you, Chair. As another am crying woman, I wish to pay my respects and acknowledge the First Nations people of the land on which the Royal Commission is sitting today. We acknowledge the Morwennan people, the traditional custodians of the land on which Nippona, the city of Hobart, is now located. We recognise the Rurunji people of the Kola Nation, where the city of Melbourne is now situated. We recognise Nejin, Brisbane. We recognise the country north and south of the Brisbane River as the home of both Turrbal and Jaggaran nations, whose land is now where the city of Brisbane is located. We also wish to acknowledge the traditional custodians of the lands on which you all virtually appear from and any First Nations peoples who are participating in this hearing, especially women mimical and children digital with disability. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mason. I understand that there are appearances to be announced this morning on behalf of Tasmanian Police and Tasmanian Legal Aid. If that's correct, could the appearances be announced now?
Yes, Chair. I just wonder if we can do the appearances for Tasmanian, Tasmania Police when the Commissioner attends shortly. I don't think there's a separate appearance for Tasmania Legal Aid.
There is not. All right, in that case, we'll postpone the announcement of the appearance until later. Yes, Mrs.
Thank you. Commissioners, this is the final day of the hearing and our attention today turns to understanding some of the services that operate on a frontline and operational basis in relation to responding to the experience of women and girls with disability who experience family and domestic violence. In Tasmania, the program described as Safe at Home is an integrated whole of government response to family violence. Safe at Home comprises sixteen separate funded initiatives across four government departments, the Departments of Justice, Police and Public Safety, Health and Human Services and Premier and Cabinet, as well as reforms that were introduced to the Family Violence Act in 2004. In summary, the objectives of Safe at Home are to, first, achieve a reduction in the level of family violence in the medium to long term; secondly, to improve safety for adult and child victims of family violence; and thirdly, to change the offending behaviour of those responsible for violence. The Safe at Home program is based on the following principles: it is a recognition that family violence is a crime and where evidence exists, it has been evidence to support arrest and prosecutions. A second important principle is the safety of victims is paramount. Police are responsible for providing the immediate intervention to secure victim's safety and manage risk that offenders might engage in conduct that repeats or escalates violence. It's premised on the principle that the victim does not determine the response of the justice system and wherever possible, victims should be able to choose to remain in or return as soon as possible to their own homes. It's based on the principle that the criminal justice response to family violence should be seamless and the roles and responsibilities of each participating agency and service should be clear. Two of the key agencies with respect to Safe at Home that we're going to examine today is the role of Tasmanian Legal Aid and also the role of Tasmania Police. So Commissioners, we have two witnesses to speak to these issues and then after morning tea, we'll turn our attention to the National Disability Insurance Agency and we'll have a panel of senior managers from the agency to speak about the role of the NDIA in responding to domestic and family violence. I hope that we'll be able to conclude the evidence today shortly before 2pm. So it'll be a shorter day for those following the proceedings today. So Commissioners, can I start with our first witness, Mr. Vincenzo Cattabiano? And he is the Director of Tasmania Legal Aid. Commissioners, you'll have a statement dated the ninth of March this year and we'll just take the oaths and affirmations now.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I don't. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Mr. Cattabiano, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give the evidence today. We appreciate your attendance. This may have been explained to you, but just to be sure, I'll identify where the Commissioners are. In the Hobart Hearing Room, as you can see, there is Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Galvally is participating in the hearing from Melbourne. I am participating in the hearing from Sydney. And Mrs. Eastman, as you know, who's about to ask you some questions, is also in the Hobart Hearing Room. I shall now ask Mrs. Eastman to ask you some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I start by asking you, do you have a copy of the statement with you?
I do.
And are there any corrections or amendments to the statement?
There is a minor typo. Take it. I can locate it promptly.
Is it a minor typo? I think we can live with it.
Yes, it relates to the service provided by our Safe at Home program and at one point it refers to assisting people. Here it is, paragraph twenty-eight, sub-paragraph E, and it should read "Applications to extend, vary or revoke protection" or does not devote. But I'm sure people got the sense of that.
With that amendment to paragraph twenty-eight, sub-paragraph E, are the contents true?
Yes.
Thank you. The Commissioners have had an opportunity to read your statement and will tender the statement into evidence and those following the Royal Commission can read the statement. In the time that we've got, I want to focus on particular issues. I think to start, it would be very helpful to understand about the role of Tasmania Legal Aid in Tasmania. It's an independent statutory authority established under legislation and it commenced operation in January nineteen ninety-one.
That's correct.
And Tasmania Legal Aid is funded by a combination of funding from both the Commonwealth and Tasmanian governments.
Yes.
You also receive some additional funding from client contributions.
That's correct.
Does that mean that if you recover costs in cases, you might have a contribution that way? Or that the clients may have to also make a contribution to access services?
On grants of legal assistance, which are the most intensive service we provide, there is a general provision, although it can be waived, for a sixty-dollar contribution. And there is also scope for further contributions to be made if a person's income or financial assets exceed certain thresholds. But primarily, it's the initial contribution.
So the agency has a strategic plan. The current plan is the Tasmanian Legal Aid. Can I call it TLA just for saving some words?
Yes.
The TLA Strategic Plan Twenty Twenty to Twenty Twenty Three. That's a plan that's publicly available.
Yes, it is and it's on our website.
And the vision of TLA is that all Tasmanians are safe, respected and have their voices heard.
That's correct.
In terms of the suite of legal services that you provide, you've set out in paragraph eight, a list of those services. Could I summarise them this way? That it's to provide advice, that may be over the phone or in person, and it also involves representation in various courts, tribunals and appellate work. And one function you also have is to assist people to access this Royal Commission through the Your Story Legal Support Service.
That's right. I think it's also worth noting, part of our function is to deliver community legal education and we do so in a range of different settings. And in the last full financial year, we delivered community legal education sessions to around twelve thousand Tasmanians.
Looks like there were about two hundred and ninety community legal education setting in your statement. So in terms of how this work is delivered, you operate across Tasmania from northern parts of Tasmania and Burnie, Devonport, Launceston, and also in the south in Hobart. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the five primary areas that the TLA operates in is divided into civil law, criminal law, family law, legal services and business services.
That's correct.
All of that work is done by the equivalent to eighty-four and a half full-time staff.
That's, yes, that's retirement.
You've provided in your statement some statistics in terms of the work that Legal Aid does. And we might put up the first slide. So we've taken the information you provided to us and just prepared a slide that's got the statistics. It might be an easier way of people following rather than me reading out percentages. So this first slide sets up a demographic of the Tasmania Legal Aid clients. So the Royal Commission has a sense of the client base. You've said many clients live with social or economic disadvantage and many face complex legal problems. So this is a snapshot. Sixty-five percent of the clients receive government benefits. You've got the other statistics there, but a third of the clients live with disability.
That is so. And for clarification, these figures relate to more intense services for which we actually collect the demographic data. We deliver a large number of services. For example, our telephone advice service, which is an anonymous service, so we don't carry, collect that data. There's, on average, around twenty thousand of those annually. So it's not represented necessarily of the full range of suite of services that we provide, but in terms of those more intense services for which we collect that data, that's correct.
And we asked you about the services in respect to women and girls with disability and in particular, to women and girls with disability who experience family or sexual violence. So you've provided some data for us in relation to that. I think you've said in the statement that forty-five percent of TLA's clients are women and girls.
Yes.
And over half of the, of that client base, experience family violence.
That's correct.
And more than a quarter live with disability. So we'll just put some of those statistics up. Do you want to speak to any, any of these statistics in terms of what you've seen in TLA's client base? And I suppose one question we have is, how do you identify disability?
So, as can be seen from the table that is now on the screen, there has been an increase in the services provided over the five-year period. Again, these figures relate to the more intense services for which we collect the data. The information around the demographic details, including whether a person lives with disability, is part of the intake process and is one of the questions that is asked on the application for legal assistance.
Is disability defined in any particular way? And if you don't know...
I can't recall whether it is explicitly defined, although we do collect data around the various type of disability that a person might identify because we believe we have data in relation to matters such as whether it's a psychosocial disability or a physical disability and what the nature of that is.
And you've also said in the statement, in terms of looking at the cohort of women who are clients of TLA, it might be that in the course of providing legal advice and assistance, that the TLA lawyers identify family violence. So are we right in understanding that you may have women and girls coming to the service to seek advice and assistance in relation to family violence? But they may, for example, come in relation to a property dispute or information about something else and then in the course of the consultation or in course of providing advice, the lawyers might identify family violence?
That's correct. So we recently conducted a survey of our staff as part of some work that we were doing preparing a client's safety framework. And in that, we asked about the staff experience in assisting clients with family violence-related matters. And what the staff identified is that it was very common, in fact, a daily occurrence, that they would see clients who were coming for assistance with a particular legal problem, not having identified a family violence issue. I think it's very common, for example, that to occur in, say, family law matters where the dispute that presents for the client is around, say, care of a child, but there is very often an underlying family violence issue.
When the lawyers identify the family violence issue and the client also is a person living with disability, what's your expectation as to how the lawyers then support the client facing family violence but also living with disability? Because the service doesn't receive any funding that's specifically designated for services for women and girls with disability who experience family violence. So how do you expect the lawyers to approach or handle such a situation?
So that's correct. Certainly, our Safe at Home lawyers and our family violence service has the same name as the broader statewide service, Safe at Home. But the TLA's Safe at Home service, those lawyers operate within a client-centred framework. And so they have received and undertaken some training with regard to that and their response is, as I say, in a trauma-informed way, where they are seeking to understand the impact of the trauma, but also the particular needs of the client, ensuring that they are giving the client the opportunity to identify the issues that they have and taking some additional time than might ordinarily be the case for a commercial matter, issue or a straightforward criminal matter that might arise. So it is very much that trauma-informed, client-focused approach.
I might come back and ask you about the trauma-informed training that the lawyers at TLA undertake. But before doing that, you've touched on Safe at Home and I've mentioned just in some very brief opening remarks that Safe at Home is an integrated criminal justice response to family violence.
Yes.
Really seeks to bring a range of agencies together. Looking at the material, it seems that the first entry point for, say, the Safe at Home principles to operate might be an engagement or interaction with the police. But it's also the case that Legal Aid might, or TLA, might become involved at a fairly early stage, either on referral from the police or it may be, as we've just discussed, that the identification of family violence arises with an engagement with the TLA lawyers, perhaps in a different context.
Yes, and also clients might be referred to us from other service providers. So other family violence service providers, non-legal providers. And so they often enter our system in that way.
So you've said in the statement, this is paragraph twenty-seven, that TLA provided thirteen hundred and forty-one services to four hundred and thirty women and girls experiencing family violence. This was done by, this is three-point-eight full-time lawyers that you have in the family, in the Safe at Home team, but also by private practitioners funded by TLA for that purpose.
Yes.
And in that cohort of the four hundred and thirty women and girls, approximately twenty-nine percent identified as disability, as people living with disability.
Yes.
But you've also identified in that part of your statement other attributes that might sort of indicate an intersectionality or a multi-layered experience. So First Nations women, women with migrant or refugee background and also older women.
Yes.
What's the approach taken under the Safe at Home service in providing services to women who live with disability, but may also be, for example, First Nations or from a cold background?
So there's a number of aspects with regard to that. As I said, there is the overall approach and we've been fortunate in having largely some long-term staff who have gained significant experience over time in working in this complex field and in particular, have an acute awareness of the intersectionality that arises for many of the clients that they're dealing with. Tasmania Legal Aid has recently engaged in a reconciliation action plan process and we have our first reconciliation action plan where we have taken considerable steps to increase our awareness and understanding of the local context and developing greater cultural awareness and trying to feed that into our service response. There is, has not been any specific training in recent times that I'm aware of with regard to, say, delivering services to women from a migrant or refugee background, although there is ongoing interaction with the other support services and these are often issues that arise. Can I note that with regard to the figure there of the two-point-five percent having identified as First Nations women, that is significantly lower than our overall representation on grants of aid for people who have identified as being First Nations, which is around nine percent. And it may well identify that we aren't reaching that group of people as effectively as we might.
Paragraph twenty-eight of the statement, you set out the range of services provided by TLA under the Safe at Home service and I won't ask you to go through each of them.
Yes.
But can I ask you to stand back from the description there to say, how does that fit into an integrated service? And I suppose the question really here is, at what points do decisions, are decisions made about referrals to police or to other parts of government? I think it would be helpful for the Royal Commission just to understand from a TLA perspective, how does that integrated service model work?
Certainly. So I think those considerations are taken into account at numerous stages throughout interactions with clients. It's very often that would be in that initial interaction with a client where a family violence issue is identified, that assistance will then be provided to the person to make a report, to prepare a statement, to provide to police. So it's at that very early stage. And there'll be instances where decisions have been made by police not to proceed and then an assessment is made as to whether Tasmania Legal Aid should support the person to make their own application for an order. And that also occurs. At that early intake process, there's also consideration given to appropriate referrals and supports for, and they might be social supports as well as referrals to other parts of Tasmania Legal Aid. So whether it be our family violence service, our family advice and best family advocacy and support service or other services within the organisation.
You've said in your statement that over the past five years, there've been improved outcomes for women experiencing family violence. In terms of why you can make the assessment that there's improved outcomes, how have you gone about measuring that? And what do you see at a very sort of practical day-to-day level? Are the improvements in the outcomes under the Safe at Home program?
So that statement was putting it in the context of the clients who we've been able to assist as part of not only our Safe at Home program, but that broader Safe at Home response. And we believe that there is a benefit that is obtained from that broader Safe at Home response because of the integrated nature of it. There is access to information that would otherwise not be available or not be as readily available as part of that broader integrated response. And there are the closer links or integration of the support network. So it's within that context that we make that assessment.
I want to move on now to ask you about any barriers or gaps that continue to exist. And you've identified that while Safe at Home has improved responses, people with disability still face barriers in the system. And one is that the lawyers report that women and girls with intellectual disability are at a higher risk of an incident not being recorded. And you've had two clients recently where this issue has arisen. You've set those out in paragraphs forty-seven and forty-nine of the statement.
Yes.
I can see the Commissioner of Police is coming to the hearing room and this might be a matter I'll ask him about as well. So the, one of the incidents involved a woman who reported that she'd been threatened with a gun and her pet cat had drowned. And there was a failure to take a report or into the details into the police family violence, violence client management system. So that failure to enter or not being entered meant that the Safe at Home system was not activated.
Yes.
There were, from what you understand from reviewing the case, there was no investigation of charges, no protection orders issued, no support services accessed. And the, I think the woman or women were then at further risk of offending. So that's one instance. And the second was a client who wanted assistance to apply for a family violence order against an ex-partner. And there was some concern in terms of being able to take the action that she needed. So these could be some one-off aberrations, couldn't they? Rather than the whole of the system not working well. But does it highlight that if the system is working well, it does require those attention, that clear attention at those entry points, which might be receiving the initial information or recording information and then initiating the action? So what can you tell us about the two instances that you've referred to there?
I think these two instances are perhaps some stark examples of the sorts of challenges and barriers. I think these two instances are perhaps some stark examples of the sorts of challenges and barriers that our lawyers identify in their day-to-day work. So it does require, I think, that difficult time when police are attending and making assessments in relation to action, that, that these factors and the particular circumstances of the individuals involved are taken into consideration. I think there's, we also speak about the issue of misidentification, which is also a factor that we see and see with some frequency that is particularly acute for people living with disability. And we provide some examples in the statement with regard to that. I'm not aware of any extensive research that's been done or examination that's been done in Tasmania with regard to that. But I note some recent work out of Victoria and even on Victoria Police's own assessment. About twelve percent of instances involving women who were identified as perpetrators on further investigation was identified that had been a misidentification of the woman as the perpetrator.
So when you're talking about misidentification, this might arise that police attend a particular incident. And when speaking to those involved or present at the incident, depending on how much information might be provided, the victim might be misidentified as the predominant aggressor. And you've said this can be a particular issue for women with disability because the type of information that women, that women might provide might be very detailed, including what they have done to the perpetrator. And the description of their own conduct might be the basis then for police making an assumption that they are the perpetrators rather than the victims. And that's where the misidentification arises.
But that's correct, and that's one of the circumstances in which misidentification can arise. It might also be in terms of the person's presentation. They may not appear to be a conventional victim, if you like. They may be angry, they may be shouting. And it's at those moments where, as I say, those difficult decisions need to be made. But that, there can be that misidentification. And if there isn't a further exploration as to the history and the circumstances in that relationship, that misidentification can lead to significant consequences for the person involved. Not only in terms of an immediate order and perhaps removal from a home. There's then the increased risk of further, or charges arising from breaches of that order has issues and challenges with regard to the care of children, particularly where someone is removed from their home in the Tasmanian context, where housing is particularly difficult to come by. And a large number of people live in quite precarious housing circumstances. And so then that has further flow-on effects in terms of the capacity of, for women to retain and regain the care of children. So it has this snowballing effect.
And you've given a case study example, and you've shared a few case study examples in the statement of Rebecca's story. As a woman with intellectual disability and mental health issues.
Yes.
She was misidentified, which resulted in not having contact with her children or her partner, being away from the home, but then returning to the home, arguments arose. And then you got into a cycle of further charges being laid.
That's correct.
So she's a client where the Safe at Home lawyer unraveled a situation that arose. Is that, that what happened on that one?
Yes, yes, that's correct, as outlined.
Just then, moving forward to criminal justice process, the Safe at Home scheme also works with appearing in court and participating in criminal justice processes. One thing I wanted to ask you about was the special witness status and the witness intermediary scheme. We write in understanding that that scheme operates for offenders, but not for victims.
The sorry, the special witness scheme with regard to the provision where a court makes an order for the representation.
Yes.
In order to prevent a perpetrator of family violence from directly cross-examining
Yes.
the victim. That's correct.
Then I wanted to, and I'm just very conscious of time. And I think we're very interested to hear some of the recommendations that you've made. And one was the, so Commissioners, this is paragraph seventy-six. You've set out a series of recommendations, some touch on training. One of the recommendations that you've made was more comprehensive family violence training guidelines and protocols to address misidentification. That might be directed to police, but also more broadly to everybody in the Safe at Home system?
I think there would be benefit in that training being rolled out more broadly, also for legal practitioners. So that, as you saw from our data, a significant number of those orders for family violence orders were conducted by private practitioners pursuant to a grant of legal assistance. But also a significant proportion of our family law work, for example, is conducted by private practitioners pursuant to a grant. So I think that there would be benefit of that broader training.
And just while we're on sort of legal practitioners, you've also suggested a need for or support for national legal aid recommendations to have a national multidisciplinary disability legal service. That's based on your work in Tasmania. You've got a third of clients who may be people with disability, particularly women and girls. What would an effective multidisciplinary disability legal service look like?
So it would require both specialist lawyers and social support staff who would be able to provide an integrated service that is focused on meeting the cluster of needs that people often present with, and in particular, people with disability. Within legal aid commissions around Australia, but in particular in Tasmania, there's a couple of examples that we can draw on. There is the Family Advocacy and Support Service, which provides services at family courts where we have lawyers and social support workers. But in Tasmania, our Senior Assist Service, for example, also has a model of lawyers and social support working together. So that often when meeting a client, both will be present. And so that there can be an identification of the various issues that are required. And then the an appropriate plan developed in order to meet that person's needs.
And the other recommendations you make might be more in that support area. And one issue that you've identified, and it's throughout your statement, is the lack of services and support, but particularly in relation to housing and affordable housing. That may be a national issue, but it's a quite acute issue presently in Tasmania. How is the lack of housing and accommodation options, particularly for women and girls with disability, seeking to take themselves out of a situation of family and domestic violence? Because often they're the ones who have to move. How does that then impact in the effectiveness of, as you say, a whole-of-government or integrated approach to addressing domestic and family violence?
So as I mentioned earlier, housing is under, the availability of housing is under acute pressure in Tasmania. And there are high numbers of people who are in precarious living circumstances, whether it's couch surfing or living in very substandard circumstances. The challenge for women leaving violent relationships is then exacerbated by the acute lack of not only housing options and the delay in access to housing services, but the pressure that women's refuges are under. The Hobart Women's Shelter reports that over approximately the last eighteen-month period, they were turning away seven out of ten women, eight out of ten children. So there are very few options for women who are leaving these violent relationships. And so what that can result in is difficult choices about either remaining or returning to a relationship, and in particular where there are children involved, where the question of the care of the child is connected with stable housing, access to school, all of those factors. And so that is another complicating factor in that dynamic.
The final questions that I want to ask you then turn to the commonwealth fitting into the Safe at Home integrated model for women and girls who are NDIS participants. And you've addressed some recommendations in relation to NDIS plans in the final paragraph of your statement. Does that absence of having in the NDIA as part of the Safe at Home system or program impact on the effectiveness of Safe at Home in Tasmania? So it may pick up on, as you've just said, housing issues. Because you've identified that women and girls with disability experiencing family violence and needing intensive supports may need additional supports at particular points in time. And they could be assistance with sustainable parenting, but also just very basic and immediate supports around travelling, housing, and just access to health services and the like.
I think it would be fair to suggest that involvement of the NDIA in the overall framework would certainly be of assistance to women with disability who experience family violence.
And the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission has a role in oversight of service providers. And there are obviously many service providers operating in Tasmania from very small service providers to larger service providers. Does the, does TLA have any relationship with the Quality and Safeguards Commission in terms of referral or any involvement in how the QSC does its work and any investigations?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
And finally, and I, and I think I asked you this the other day, is for women and girls who may live in more closed settings, for example, their residence in group homes or they're older women in aged care. Well, they may be women in circumstances where their access to the community is more limited. How do those women reach TLA or how does TLA reach those women?
It's obviously one of those challenges in certainly making your services known. And we engage in various means of communication to try and get the message out there as to the full range of services, whether it's through community legal education sessions, our presence in various forms of social media and engagement in various other activities that might profile, raise the profile and awareness within the community. We certainly, with the Your Story service that's supporting the work of the commission, have sought, perhaps with mixed results, reaching into some of those services. And that, that remains to be a challenge.
We've just, I feel like we've just skated the surface today. But thank you very much for the very detailed statement, which I know the Commissioners have read. And those following the hearing will be able to read the statement as well. But thank you very much for the work that you and I know your policy people have done at the, at the Legal Aid. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Kelpa. I'll ask Commissioners if I may, whether they have any questions, if you're starting with the Commissioner.
I have just two questions to ask you.
Yes.
Thank you for the very detailed, as Kate said, a detailed information provided. Firstly, I just would like to briefly go to paragraph twelve and the table of stats that was provided to us. And it shows significant increase of women and girls with disability services provided in sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, and yet a dip in nineteen twenty and twenty twenty-one. Do you have any observations why that would have decreased?
I would be speculating, but I suspect that that may in part be a COVID impact. We did see some reductions in some services as a result of COVID, particular people seemingly not reaching out for services as much as they were previously.
That would align with other things that we've heard.
Yes.
The other question that goes to, in some jurisdictions, particularly Victoria, that I'm aware of, there is an increased approach to remove the perpetrator from the home actively through police, legal services and court systems, rather than have the person subject to violence having to be homeless or seeking alternative accommodation arrangements. Do you think, has Tasmania started to shift towards that model? And if not, would that also, if it was a preferred statement under the, the Safe at Home program, would that reduce some of the problems that you've described about housing shortage and access to other accommodation?
My understanding is that where there is police involvement, there is violence that has been identified, that, that can and does result in the perpetrator being removed in those circumstances. That highlights the importance of getting it right at that point, in particular, the challenge of misidentification that I spoke about earlier. So I think that that does occur. The challenge often though for women is where there has not been that early intervention and they're experiencing family violence, but perhaps the police haven't been involved to such an extent that results in the removal of the perpetrator. So often there is an ongoing pattern of family violence that isn't identified externally. Women often approach us without having made notifications to police. And the first approach is after the assistance that's provided by the Safe at Home lawyer to prepare a statement and actually approach police and then there's intervention. Safety assessments are made at that point and advice given to women around how they can retain and maintain their safety, in particular, given, as we know, the high, one of the very high risk points, danger points is just prior to or immediately after leaving a relationship.
My last quick question is that the data and much of what you've talked about is being family and intimate partner violence. And Miss Eastman sort of talked about different housing situations, such as group homes or institutional settings. We do also raise this, and I just wondered. and I just wondered, did you have any data on where women might be coming, where it's a carer or a service provider or other family members or situations? Is there any sense of the degree of the violence against women and girls from other parties or other settings?
So perhaps two parts to that answer. The definition for the relevant order in Tasmania is, is rather limited, and it is to that intimate partner. There is a framework for orders for other relationships. So there is, there are a number of those orders that are made. They are fewer in number than for the intimate partner relationships, and that tends to be the focus or the primary area in which we deliver services. So I don't, we probably don't have as good a sense of that broader number, that broader context that you're asking about. Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Mason.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Thank you again for your evidence. Just want to ask a quick question. In the Northern Territory, we have an integrated response to domestic and family violence as well. And included in that package is hybrid change programs for perpetrators. And I was just interested in Tasmania's approach, particularly in relation to Safe at Home. And of course, with an eye on the level of recidivism and change in those interventions.
Um, there are programs available and that are part of the system. Unfortunately, I won't be able to give you that, that information in terms of either the uptake or the, whether there's been any analysis of the success, i.e. the recidivism rate with regard to those.
Yeah. We did yesterday spoke about gendered violence and also ableist violence and abuse. And of course, we want to target those programs, particularly because those areas that speak to the conditions, particularly across particular cohorts of women, whether they be First Nations and call community. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gell.
Um, thank you very much. It was really valuable. Look, I'd like to come back to paragraph forty-seven in your statement, because this issue of people with intellectual disability or who don't communicate verbally, or who communicate with great difficulty, and that the incidents are then not recorded by police, that really is a big area. And I just wondered whether I could have your comments on that and on what we're going to do about that area. Because, you know, it's not just, it's in every, every part of life in terms of abuse and violence that I've heard about this, especially in private sessions as well as in the hearing. It just struck me as very important, that paragraph.
Thank you. I think that it is really a matter that warrants the consideration of further training that is focused specifically to address the issues that can arise, those challenges in terms of the communication, the presentation, the ensuring that a detailed history is taken so that we can avoid the circumstances where these sorts of instances arise.
Um, just to connect it to Commissioner Bennett's question, if we're talking about intimate partners' violence and we've got group homes and other ways of living, where people within, with intellectual disability and other disabilities don't have access or encouragement to have those more traditional relationships, then could the term intimate be, you know, is it intimate to be abused by a support worker? It's not an intimate partner. But, you know, the, the situation, just leaving them out of the, this, this intervention and program seems really, you know, because that would be the pointy end of what, of violence in a way.
So I think it's fair just to summarize, and we see examples of violence in those settings. Think that's one of the things that sits behind the recommendation with regard to the National Disability Legal Service, which would resource Legal Aid Commissions to focus more broadly on this area. And then, as indicated in the statement, we do not receive funding at present that is specifically dedicated to addressing these issues. And having a committed direct focus would obviously permit us and assist us in reaching out to this group of people more successfully.
Thank you.
Thank you. And as far as the recommendation for a national multidisciplinary disability legal service, how far has that proposal got? Has anybody worked out how it would actually operate at the national level? Who would fund this? Who would start it? How it would link with the state agencies?
Um, I believe that it was part of the submission that National Legal Aid made, and National Legal Aid is the, in effect, the peak body that represents all Legal Aid commissions, including Tasmania Legal Aid. It would need further work with regard to developing the model. However, as I indicated, there are some examples of the sorts of services that already exist. The FAS service is a Commonwealth-funded national service that is delivered by Legal Aid commissions around Australia.
Is it envisaged that a national service would actually provide services through the state and territory agencies or through a separate national agency?
So it would be through the, the state and territory, the existing Legal Aid commissions around Australia.
Yeah. The attempts to set up a national Legal Aid body have not been met with unmitigated success in Australia's history over the last fifty years.
Yes.
Yeah, all right. Well, thank you very much for your evidence, Mr. Kelpner. We do appreciate the detailed written paper that you provided on the evidence today. So thank you very much for your assistance to the work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Could I ask that you receive the statement into evidence and mark the statement seventeen point thirty point one?
Yes, the State Office of Mr. Kelpner will be included into evidence and given that mark.
Thank you, Chair. We're just going to have a short adjournment for about fifteen minutes just to reconstitute the hearing room. And I can see the Commissioner for Police has arrived.
Yes, all right. Well, we'll let us resume then at eleven twenty, Hobart, Sydney time, ten twenty.
Thank you very much.
The Royal Commission, Isa Jones. The Royal Commission is resumed. Yes, Mrs. East.
Thank you. There's one appearance, Mr. Miller, who'll announce his appearance.
Yes, please, please.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Mark Miller. I appear to represent Tasmania Police Service. I'm grateful to the Commission for granting leave to do so. I note for the sake of completeness that I am an in-house counsel. My role is principal legal officer, and I've held that role for nearly twenty-four years. Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Miller. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioners, we have Commissioner Darren Heine, who is the Commissioner of Police in Tasmania. And I think you're taking a note. Is that right?
I will read you the, and at the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence that you shall get will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Commissioner Heine, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission and to the Hobart Hearing Room to give evidence. We appreciate your attendance and we also appreciate the statement that you have provided, which I'm sure will shortly be admitted into evidence. Just so you're aware of where everybody is, although you may already be aware, you are in the room with Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason. And Commissioner Gellbally is joining the hearing from Melbourne. I am in our Sydney hearing room. Ms. Eastman, of course, is in the Hobart Hearing Room, and I shall now ask Ms. Eastman to ask you some questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. You've provided a statement to the Royal Commission dated the twenty-fourth of February this year. Have you read the statement?
Yes, I have.
Are there any corrections or amendments to the statement?
No.
And are its contents true and correct?
Yes.
Thank you. So you hold the role of Commissioner of Police in Tasmania, although I think you've announced your retirement recently. Is that right?
Uh, yes, in October, I will retire from this position.
And you also hold the role of Secretary of the Department of Police, Fire and Emergency Management. Is that right?
That's correct.
So you've held the role of the Commissioner of Police for some time now?
Yes, fourteen years coming up to in this role.
And you've provided to us a copy of your CV, which will be tendered into evidence when we complete our discussion. There's a lot in your statement, and I won't be able to do justice to it in covering absolutely everything in our discussion this morning. But I want to focus very specifically on the experience of women and girls with disability who experience family and domestic violence. Over the course of the last week, we've heard many accounts of women and girls with disability in seeking to report to the police. In some cases, they've been very positive experiences, but in other cases, there's been real challenges and barriers, both to reporting, to being believed, to understanding what police do, how police can provide assistance, perhaps also some expectations about what police can do that might not necessarily align with your functions, and also for women working their way through the justice system. So I understand that your office has been following the proceedings over the course of the week.
Yes.
I'm not going to ask you about any particular case or any aspect of the evidence that has arisen, but I wanted to draw on your statement and pick up some of the themes that the Royal Commission has heard over the course of the week. So in terms of the Tasmania Police functions and powers in relation to experience of women and girls in family, domestic violence or sexual violence, you've said in your statement Tasmania has been a world leader in responding to family violence. Is that because of the work done in the Family Violence Act when it was enacted in Tasmania in two thousand and four? And that's then been accompanied by the Safe at Home framework, which is that, which I've spoken about this morning, is an integrated approach to supporting victims of family and domestic violence. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
The Safe at Home framework and the Family Violence Act apply to women or victims of domestic and family violence generally. It's not specific to women and girls with disability. Is that right?
That's correct.
You've set out in your statement the functions, and the Royal Commissioners can see that on page two of the statement. But you've said that with respect to the Family Violence Act, and do we take it, the approach taken by Tasmanian police is you don't differentiate between disability, gender or age, but you focus on prevention, detection and prosecution of family violence offenders. Is that right?
That's correct.
If there's no differentiation based on characteristics such as disability age, and I might add to the, the mix there, other factors, LGBTI status, First Nations status, being a person from a migrant or refugee background, if there are risks that not focusing on those particular characteristics mean, but there might be some barriers in terms of how the Family Violence Act works and protects people with the multilayered experience or how police respond to that cohort of people?
I, I think I'd rather look at it, excuse me, the other way. It actually includes all those, those barriers and to make sure that the police officers who are attending in their training actually take all those barriers or various circumstances into account to make sure that through their training, they are recognizing that and actually dealing with those situations that's presented to them. So whilst I understand your question, I actually think it's the other way. It actually is more inclusive through our training and our approach.
Can I ask you in terms of how family violence is defined in the legislation in Tasmania? Is it a broad definition that's used or is it focused on particular relationships?
In fact, that was one of the recommendations that, you know, I'd like to leave the Royal Commission with, as in, I think some of the significant relationship definitions under relationship that can be a little bit narrow. And some of the issues that have been brought up to take into account various relationships, I think the definition can be a bit narrow. And I think that's one of the things that needs to be further explored to actually expand it to not only give the police an opportunity to deal with various relationships and not have to try and fit it into the act, but it's broader. And therefore, all the other support mechanisms and legal support mechanisms are available to those people. So yes, I think there is an opportunity to, to review that.
Said in your statement Tasmania Police has a designated family violence units and you employ specialist family violence prosecutors. What can you tell us about how those units operate? And with respect to the family violence prosecutors, what particular qualifications do they have to perform that work?
Thank you. It's, we have various areas within Tasmania Police that specifically look at family violence. We head up a safe families coordination unit, which is headed by Tasmania Police. And we have our experts in there, not only from a policing perspective, but also from an education, health, justice communities as well. So they integrate and to make sure we have an integrated approach. Because we understand there, if a solid approach doesn't give the best support to, to victims or offenders. So they, what we call map high risk situations that a police officer, or it has come to their attention. Then within the, the police service, each of our regional areas or districts, as we call them, we've got one in the Western, in the North with Launceston, and down South. So Tasmania is divided into those. Each area has a family violence unit. And typically, there are five police officers in there with a sergeant in charge. They are embedded into our criminal investigation branch, which is headed up by an inspector. And again, we have our highly trained, experienced police officers in there that they review all family violence matters. And as part of our, our program, we have been giving, given investments to actually continue to, to employ family violence prosecutors. And again, we've now got fifteen across the state, and that is their main role. And that not only receives training, but Mr. Miller, who has been given approval to appear here today, he assists with the, the selection of those people to make sure we have the right qualified people to perform those roles. And I have to say, these prosecutors have, have developed expertise in the prosecution of family violence.
What makes their role as a family violence prosecutor different perhaps to the regular prosecutors? What is it about their training or their qualifications that may, make it different?
I think one of the areas that they specialize in, as in to making sure they understand the law, they study the, the legislation. I think one of the areas that they specialize in, as in to making sure they understand the law, they study the legislation that applies to family violence. So they have a detailed understanding. They work closely, not only with Mr Miller, but also the Director of Public Prosecutions Office as well, to make sure they have a detailed understanding. They work with the, not only the victims, but the police officers are dealing with these situations. And obviously there's professional development. So they are specialized in that area to make sure that, as we know in the law, there are various specializations and they specialize in family violence. So they are highly trained, they are scrutinized in relation to what they do, given professional development through Mr Miller's office as well.
So you've said in your statement, this is page fifteen in answer to question fourteen, that the family violence units within the criminal investigation branches assist in dealing with family violence related matters for all persons and are not intended specifically. So do you mean by that, that it's not a family violence unit that's got a specific focus on women and girls that applies across the board, is that right?
That's correct. They deal with the family violence matters, no matter who may be involved.
And to the extent that the family violence unit has this quite specific role, does the family violence unit also have particular expertise in supporting people with disability?
Whilst they are actually trained in dealing with everyone, no matter what background or circumstance they come from, and including disability. We have several assistance and guidelines for them under our police manual and our family violence manual to say, to assist them to where to get the various expertise to help not only the victim, but also for them to understand. And the people that we put into there, again, they have been in that area for a long period of time. They've certainly had expertise over, gained over many, many years to assist not only people with disabilities, but from various other backgrounds as well.
But do I take it by that, that they are not sort of specialists in disability in addition to being specialists in family violence, is that right? You don't have that combined function?
It's a combined function, being a smaller jurisdiction, it's very hard to have specialists in each area. But they are generalists, but with specific expertise in family violence. So whilst we're a small jurisdiction and, you know, approximately one percent of our victims that come to us have identified or notified us of a disability. So to actually specialize in that area would be very difficult to target the resources to put in there.
You've just made mention of the Tasmania Police Manual and I think a version of that's publicly available.
That's correct.
And the manual in a sense are your commissioners' orders as to what you expect of police officers and members in discharging their functions.
That's correct.
It's a very comprehensive set of orders and sets out expectations of police officers, is that right?
That's correct.
And it covers a range of issues, including provisions dealing with family violence.
That's correct.
And you've also got in the manual some particular parts dealing with people with disability and impairment. Now, just because of the time constraints, as much as I might like to do this, I'm not going to take you through that part of the manual. But can I summarize it this way? Is if we read the manual dealing with people with disability and impairment and people with disability, is there's a clear direction to police officers in performing their duties that they have to have an awareness of disability?
That's correct.
And members need to understand that communication with people with disability might be different to communication with people without disability.
That's correct.
And your expectation is that if a police officer is able to identify a person with disability, that they need to ensure that person has the relevant supports. It might be with respect to communication or having another person supporting them. But also the police officers are not to make assumptions about people with disability, that they may be impaired or unable to make decisions themselves.
That's correct.
My attempt to try to summarize quite a bit of the manual.
It's a fair summary.
Have I missed anything in that regard?
No, I think that's a fair thumbnail sketch.
The manual does also make a particular reference to the United Nations Conventions on the Rights of Persons with Disabilities. What, what's the reason for including the CRPD in the manual? And what is your expectation of police officers in knowing their way around or understanding the relevance of the CRPD to their work?
We put that in the, in the manual. So if there's any policy development or guidelines development, those police officers responsible for developing those guidelines or policy are aware of it and make sure that they actually look at it and take it into account when developing the policy or the guidelines. I don't expect every operational police officer to be aware of it, but those who are providing training, guidelines or policy to be aware of it. So it's there for them to take that into account.
Also, looking at the manual, there's some requirements that police officers have to follow if they are conducting investigations or, for example, forensic work, so taking forensic evidence or also interviewing people. Looking at the manual in relation to those matters, there is a provision dealing with forensic considerations of examination of a victim with intellectual, mental or physical disability. So that's four point, I'll just give you the reference. So it's four point, four point, ten point six. Then the provisions dealing with the interviewing of victims of sexual abuse. There's provision in the manual for interviewing victims of sexual abuse who are children. But there's no specific provision dealing with interviews of people with disability who are victims of sexual abuse. Do you agree with that?
Whilst I agree with your statement, I suppose it's actually embedded in other sections of the manual to make sure that they take that into account as well. So whilst, yes, I agree with your statement, but also I think it's embedded in the manual to make sure they take those circumstances into account.
I thought I might approach understanding the interaction that the police may have with women and girls with disability who are experiencing family, domestic violence or sexual violence by walking through what might happen. So can I take you through some scenarios so that hopefully we can match what's in the police manual? But what actually happens on a day-to-day, on an operational level? So if a person with disability, woman or girl, wanted to report that they felt unsafe in their home or that they had experienced violence and abuse, what's the first step for them to engage with the police?
In relation to those circumstances you've outlined, that can come to police in several ways. And I've got several examples where it's come through support workers, friends and family. So it mightn't come directly from the victim. But if it does come from the victim into our, what we call our communications center, our radio room, they may make connection through that.
So what, that'd be a one eight?
One three, one triple four number.
Or triple zero call?
Triple zero if it's occasion emergency. And of course, that has another set of protocols. If it's triple zero and it's emergency, obviously it's, we've got an operational response policy, how many police officers would go. But even before, you know, when they contact our radio room, our radio room has experience in dealing with matters of family violence. There's several ways that they can communicate, people can communicate with the radio, whether it's by text, email or via the internet. So once that call comes in, our radio room operators are experienced to obtain the information from the individual. They would then have a look at the information that has been supplied through our various databases to ascertain the people involved, if it might require a multi-unit response if there's an immediate danger. And so any of the history that we have, they'll be passed on to the operational police officer.
Can I pause there? In terms of the information that you have, step one is when the call comes in or there's that initial contact, they may be experienced in family and domestic violence, but what experience do that initial contact person have in disability? In communicating with people with intellectual disability or people who may have communication needs? What happens then?
Our radio room personnel are trained in relation to call-taking to make sure they have the experience to obtain calls. For example, often we'll sometimes get sorry, it's triple zero calls, no voice. Therefore, there's a set of protocols that are enacted when that occurs. If there is someone having difficulty communicating, it's a matter of following it up. It's not left there. It is always followed up to make sure the person is safe where the telephone, the call has come from, to make sure we dispatch a unit there anyway. So they have training through experience and through their training as well. And they have access to our manuals as well to make sure if an interpreter is needed, they'll obtain that to make sure they get the information. But if that occurs and there is difficulty contacting or speaking with someone on the telephone, then obviously a unit would be dispatched anyway to follow up to see what the issue is.
When you said that then the next step is to look at the relevant records, that would be the internal police databases. So you keep a record of disability status for any offenders in your database, is that right?
There's, the databases, it's quite complex about how they're all interrelated, including the family violence database. It is a, we connect to a national database as well because we, we all understand people move around the country. So we want the best information we possibly can have. And then we've got our radio dispatch system. If we've been there before, if there's a disability involved and it's recorded, obviously that forms part of the response.
That database, and I know it's a complex database, but in shorthand, that database does not record victims who are victims, I suppose on women and girls, who are women and girls and women and girls living with disability. You don't collect that information in the database.
Some of our systems do collect that information if it's available. For example, our family violence management system. So it's a, it's like a spaghetti diagram of several databases that we have access to. Some may record that information and some don't. So it's hard to say that we don't record it all because it may be recorded in various databases.
You don't keep specific data of the number of interactions that Tasmania Police might have with people with disability, be they men or women? However, they are identifying, don't keep that data?
No, because all the, it's obviously all the hundreds of thousands, if not millions of interaction that a police officer has with members of the public. Unless there's a need to record, and we record a lot of information. It's fair to say that we don't record every interaction, no matter what it is. And we certainly don't record every interaction with a woman or a child with disability as well, because it could be in various circumstances where that wouldn't be required.
Right. Let's go to the next date, which would be sending a unit out to the particular location. So we're really talking about those sort of more acute or crisis situations. What is your expectation of the police officers who are dispatched in terms of going into a situation of a report of family violence? What can we expect to see in terms of the police officer's understanding of family violence? The indicators that the police officers may be looking for when they arrive to understand what is family violence?
The units that would be dispatched, for example, let's use Hobart as an example, we've got a twenty-four hour, seven-day-a-week uniform section. And if it was dispatched to one of those units for a start, we would have people who are well-trained in relation to these over eighty-three units or modules that they would have gone through the academy that covers family violence and disability training as well. So now there's, there's hundreds of hours of training they would already had. So they would be aware of that. They would have the information passed on to them by the radio room. Each police officer has a tablet where they can have access to all the manuals and all the information that they would have back at their office. So if they need further information, they would have that information before they even arrive. So if it's an acute situation or emergency situation, obviously the supervisor, as in a sergeant, would be aware as well. And they would be directing what units to go to make sure there is the safety of the police officers and safety of the victim to understand what is occurring. As you would expect, some of these situations, and I know you've heard evidence from victims, some of these situations are horrific and volatile and chaotic. So the police officer has to understand what they're going into to make sure they're safe and to make sure the victim is safe. They would then switch on their body worn cameras straight away to make sure it is recorded for various, whether it's judicial purposes or reviewing purposes as well. So that would be switched on straight away. It is a matter of separating the two people. So they can actually gather the information to understand who's a victim and who's the offender. Obviously whoever's called would have that information. And we do know, and I know you've had evidence in relation to that misidentification where someone may be extremely upset. Someone is cool, calm and collected, but not necessarily, it's hard to understand who is the victim and who is the offender. So police officers are trained to look through that to understand what the information, to get the victim alone, get the offender alone, get the information, start to make sure they're safe for a start. And if there's any further assistance that's required, as in medical assistance, and to start to get the story.
So the director sort of raised some examples of clients of legal aid who had been misidentified. He said the issue there was a person with intellectual disability. And the information that she may have provided to the police would have allowed the police to misidentify her as the aggressor. Just stepping back, if the officers know that there will be people with disability when the units arrive, are there any specialist police officers who are at that operational level who have experience working with people with disability, but also experience in a range of forms of communication that can be readily adapted to ensure that a person with disability is able to communicate safely and effectively with police? Do you have specialist people?
We certainly have specialist investigators and interviewers, but they're not working twenty-four seven. So I wouldn't expect that they would be there initially because they mightn't be working or mightn't be available. So that's where a generalist response, and when I say generalist, they have been highly trained to go there. So if they identify someone with a disability and they need assistance to deal with that, the information's on the manual, they've got the supervisor available and they've got the radio room to get extra resources there to assist in those circumstances.
In terms of their training, again, as I said, there's a lot in your statement about the training. There's the initial recruit training and then there's quite specific training for particular areas. They may have done these hours of training, but how do you evaluate whether or not that training has been effective in taking it from the classroom into an operational setting? Do you require ongoing training on an annual basis? Do you evaluate the training? Do you assess whether the training's been effective for the officers?
I suppose it's all of those things, as in it's a family violence matter. If we, if we jump forward a couple of steps, a family violence matter is probably one of the most scrutinized circumstance that police go to. And that's from our own internal circumstances. We have their supervisor of the people who go to make sure that they have the right response. We've got the radio dispatch, we've got the body worn videos. So when, at the end of the day, they have to put in a family violence report before they, they leave, it's again scrutinized by their supervisor. When I mentioned the family violence units, each day, a family violence unit then scrutinizes those reports as well to make sure that it has been dealt with properly. And again, these are very experienced police officers who have had many years of family violence training and experience. If it's a serious matter, it goes to our Safe at Home area where it is mapped by experts within various other agencies as well to make sure that all the information that should be gathered. And I would expect if there's some information gaps and we have And I would expect if there's some information gaps, and we have many examples where those information gaps have then been picked up and fed back into the family violence units. Um and then there's another level where uh each week we have a case coordination uh conference for not only police but education, uh communities, health, justice, again, the experts and the police, family prosecutors, they again scrutinize um those um those incidents. So that's at least four occasions that it is scrutinized by the various agencies to ensure if there's any gaps. And of course, if someone is then charged and you know, the director of legal aid is in, and if they can challenge, as in the the offender can challenge if it has been misidentified to make sure that it's uh we haven't misidentified and they have an opportunity to challenge. But if we, oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. So one, so one thing we've heard during the week is this sense of not trusting the police and where that sense of distrust arises. How uh do you train your officers to be able to have that trust, particularly in an acute or an emergency setting? That trust could be critical to the victim's wellbeing, but also her then experience through a criminal justice system.
It's really important to make sure that the police in any community uh is trusted because we do our job uh with the trust and confidence the community.
How do you build that up? Sorry to interrupt you there, but it's easy to say we want to have trust. But how do you expect your police officers to be able to develop that trust? Particularly if they're aware that the person is a person with disability.
Yeah, and and again, I was going to, it's it's easy to say and it's uh but you know, we've got various mechanisms, including national surveys about the trust and confidence in police, which uh we take extremely seriously. So there is one way, and then the number of complaints we may get as well. But police officers are trained in relation to how to uh communicate with people with uh disabilities, whether it's the call community uh or the L B J T I Q community um as well. So there is training in relation to that to make sure that we have a uh a human face when we interact with the community. And that has been built up over many, many years. So and again, that is one of our fundamentals, to be trusted and to be accountable and to be uh for the community to have uh confidence in us, including anyone who is uh has a disability as well. So um it's easy to say, uh it's very hard to build up that confidence. So uh people um trust the police, but we'll have certainly circumstances where we can't meet the expectation of victims. Because we have a judicial responsibility and sometimes the victims are um expectation of certain things. We mightn't be able to meet that for various reasons, and that's where we need to explain and deal with the victim to underst- uh help them understand where we're going, not to say we don't believe them, because we always have a fundamental um uh aspect to these jobs that we should believe victims and we must believe victims. We mightn't put everyone before the court who uh they're accusing because of various reasons. But we have a fundamental where we we must believe the victim to provide them with the support that they need. Might be a judicial response or uh an outcome, but again, providing them this uh the support uh that they require. So I'm not sure if that answered your question.
At at that um at the particular location, bring you back to the police officers there. What can a victim of domestic family or sexual violence as a person with disability expect to happen if the police arrive?
Um they should expect uh care, confidence, um and a professional approach. And if there is uh if it's identified that the person um has a disability, then they should expect that that police officer will uh get the support services to assist them um so they can communicate. And again, there's many examples where we've done that, where they get specialist services uh for the person with a disability to be able to communicate. Sometimes it will be on the on the night or on the day when the police are called, but uh police will not leave until um the victim is safe. Um and action has been taken. And if uh specialist services required, um then those specialist services um uh um assist the police to get the statement. Again, there's many examples where non-verbal um people have been able to give the statements uh in the, in a way that is tailored to and make sure we get the information uh from the person to assist them as well. So no matter what disability they um that uh we're dealing with, then the specialist service will um be contacted to be able to uh assist the police officer to make sure that we can uh get the uh that information.
Do police also ha- have a role in those circumstances of identifying relevant health services, counselling services? Maybe also uh accommodation services? Is that the role of police in that situation?
Uh the police will uh do all of those things to make sure they got the um uh those support services available for the person. And I have to say, I have many examples where the police officers go above and beyond what he's expected on to make sure there is follow up. I've had an example where um whilst police dealt with the situation, uh the victim with disability has contacted those police officers involved to um support that person in other ways. That is definitely not a a policing area. But again, it's about building that rapport uh with the uh the community and those with disability to assist them. Whilst it's not a core duty of police, they've gone out of their way. So yes, it is about uh connecting and to make sure that uh those services are are identified for the person and then connecting all those services. That's where the safe at home, that's the family violence case coordination units, and the safe at home um uh is made available.
We um asked you in the preparation of your statement whether Tasmania Police have a reasonable adjustment policy with respect to its members' engagement with people with disability, among other things, as victims of crime, as witnesses and as alleged perpetrators. And you said, no, there's no reasonable adjustment policy. If there's no reasonable adjustment policy, then uh what does that mean in terms of the police officers following the manual or being able to make adjustments that might be necessary for the person with disability, assuming she's a victim of uh family violence?
Thank you. And whilst uh we don't have a uh specific policy about reasonable justice, I think it's actually, well, it is actually built into the police manual right through. Whilst there's no uh policy I could point you to, um but it is throughout the uh the menu, it's built in. So uh police officers uh can take a reasonable adjustment approach to the circumstances but dealing with to make sure they feel more comfortable um and to make sure they've got the right resources. So whilst we don't have a policy I can uh hand up to you, it is um built throughout uh the manual.
So is so that if you don't have a standalone policy and it's in the manual, then that gives a little bit of margin of error, doesn't it, in terms of police understanding what the nature of a reasonable adjustment might be in a particular setting?
Um I'd probably flip it around to say, seeing it's built into the policy, it actually makes it clearer where that reasonable adjustment uh uh approach can be taken. So whilst we have um, we should be built on values, uh and the manual should give guidance, and there's certain orders as well. But it is also, we understand that um not every circumstance will fit neatly into a into the manual or a procedure. So therefore, there should be a um a reasonable adjustment to that, to dealing with that. So um and before, we used to have a manual that was, you know, it's it got down to very low levels and actually didn't give the police officer discretion um to have a reasonable adj- adjustment approach. So I actually think being built in um is is a way that uh takes away some of those gray areas that a a policy may create.
If um the victim is required to make a statement and she's going to be interviewed by police, are there specialist interviewers who've got expertise in family and domestic violence and disability? Is this where the C I B's family violence unit comes in at this point?
Yes, um as uh I explained before, our family uh violence um units in the three districts have uh specialized um people dealing with family violence, but they're within a criminal investigation branch who has specialized investigators um to deal with various circumstances, and they have additional training uh as well as well as some of our frontline people as well. So we do have those highly specialized investigators, and we put it to good use uh um in many circumstances to make sure that um we provide the best environment uh for the victim uh with the disability to get that information.
And I think you've kindly shared with us some guidelines on uh interviewing, and we've looked at those guidelines. There's a reference to vulnerable witnesses and vulnerable victims. There's a obviously references to children, so that would include girls. But there's no mention of any guidelines that are quite specific for engaging with people with disability. Is there a reason that the guidelines don't expressly cover people with disability who are victims of crime?
Um I suppose again, from a a smaller jurisdiction, as in they're uh very specialized, uh right across uh uh a broad uh gambits of uh the people that they deal with. And whilst a larger jurisdiction may have those specialist areas of, um we have tested what we should have a uh to be able to assist people with disabilities. So I think they're actually well trained in dealing with people with disabilities uh when they interview people. And again, they um they follow our procedure. We had it, we've had it tested on numerous occasions for other jurisdictions uh coming down to assist us. Um and um for example, we had a tragedy um not that long ago where we had to um interview children. We had our policies and procedures uh put in place, but we actually had uh people from other jurisdictions come down to assist and review. And of course, the fea- well, the feedback from those other jurisdictions was that uh we are well developed and that they are certainly a national standard in dealing with people with disabilities or vulnerable people.
Uh as part of the safe at home approach, which is the integrated approach, are you aware as to whether or not there's been a sort of holistic review of the safe at home program to look at it from a disability perspective?
Not from a disability uh perspective. Um and again, that's I look forward to the outcomes of this Royal Commission um to understand uh what we can um in- improve on. And we're always going to be a learning organization to make sure we we have the the best support and the best response for people women and girls with disabilities as well. But and we're always uh looking at other jurisdictions, we're always looking at uh how we can work with our university partners as well to make sure we're reviewing ourselves and learning uh as we go.
One uh piece of evidence we heard during the week for our first witness Chloe is she spoke of having continuity and ongoing contact with the police officer who I think attended, who interviewed, was part of the interviewing, but then supported her through the system. She said he went above and beyond, uh he would give regular updates as to what was happening, and she felt very supported by that. Do you have uh a mechanism in place in Tasmania to have that continuity of police officers who may first engage with the victim to then walk with them through a court process?
Um we, specifically for family violence, yes, we do have a process, not only the specialized uh family violence prosecutors, but also our family violence area to A to con- continue that contact to make sure they're safe. Um and also they are supported through the uh the process as well. And it was, it was a uh a great example of a police officer going above and beyond uh with Chloe as well. And that other example where I gave where um whilst um the person with disability didn't need ongoing police assistance, that bond has been created to give that assistance in case um there's other uh need for a police to assist that uh person with a disability.
Uh I don't think we specifically asked you this, but do you know what the conviction rates are for women and girls who experience family violence in terms of victims who are women and girls with disability? Have you got any data that would assist in the Royal Commission understanding what the conviction rates might be?
No, I I don't have that, but uh I'm happy it's uh from a justice in the courts uh would be able to provide that.
The the police wouldn't necessarily keep that as part of your overall database. But I'm very conscious of the time and commissioners, there's lots of questions I'd still like to ask the commissioner. My final question is this, and we've spoken about this, is we're aware that some of the police um services throughout Australia have a memorandum of understanding with the N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission. Is there an M O U between Tasmania Police and the N D I S Quality and Safeguards Commission?
There there isn't a specific uh M O U, but um we do have regular contact and we do have uh um regularly sharing of information as if there was an M O U. So whilst there's no specific M O U, but we do regularly share that information.
And last one is uh Mister Cadabaliano said he thought police needed to have some more training to deal with misidentification. Would you agree with that?
Um I don't think you can actually have uh too much training and make awareness. So we're always looking about uh to ensuring we have adequate and uh at a uh a good practice, if not best practice, training. So we're always looking at that. For example, we're developing a another uh sexual assault training package. Uh we do have disability confidence training online, which uh is mandatory um as well. So and misidentification is, there's many studies that is uh um of being conducted into this. And we know ourselves where we've uh identified it, and we've actually supported the uh the victim that was um initially the offender. So yes, we do know know that right across the country and right across the world, there is more work to be done on this. And there's uh more training to make sure that we're all aware. But police officers, when they go into a situation, uh we train them to uh to question everything to make sure that they're not misidentifying. But again, it's like a lot of other crimes, there will be misidentification of other crimes as well. But uh we certainly want to minimize that, and training is one way uh to minimize that.
And uh the director also raised a couple of instances where he said that there were gaps or still barriers. And one of them involved the failure to record charges in relation to an incident involving a gun and a drowning of a pet. Uh those matters have been brought to your attention, and I think you've seen the statement. Are they matters that you're going to follow up?
They were really, that one with the gun and firearm, I would find very surprising that it's not recorded uh and taken to, because that is a serious incident. In fact, uh we have reached out to the director um in uh in a couple of days ago to uh to get more details of that. Because that is a a significant area we've got concerns. And the director um gave us the assurance that he was going to contact the victim in race that uh specific one, to see if he could share that information. But I would find it very surprising of a serious situation involving a gun, uh involving the harming of a pet, that police didn't react. Now, for example, if uh someone had a firearms license, when we um deal with those situations, that would be taken straight off them. If they didn't, then we'd be searching. So I'd find it very surprising that it wasn't recorded. But we want to find out more information for the safety of those victims.
Right, thank you, Commissioner. Uh I'll hand back to the commissioners now. Chair.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Hine. Um I'll uh ask the commissioners if they have any questions, obviously, starting with Commissioner Mason. Commissioner Mason, do you have any questions to put Commissioner Hine?
No, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett?
Uh thank you for the information you've provided, but no questions.
And Commissioner Gill.
Um also, thank you very much for the information and no questions from me.
Commissioner Hine, thank you very much once again for coming to the Royal Commission and for the written information that you've provided to us. Uh we appreciate the assistance you've given to the Royal Commission. And uh we hope that in due course, the recommendations of the Royal Commission will be of assistance to uh lead Tasmania Police in relation to this and other matters affecting people with this.
Uh Chair, Mister Mi- Mister Miller uh would like to ask some questions.
Mister Miller, what would you like to ask questions about, Mister Todd?
Um, well, can I indicate that um if I'm permitted, the questions will be brief and I'll I'll lead to add to the brevity. Um I want to ask the Commissioner one question um relating to the scope of the act, the limitations and the amendments. I want to ask him a question in relation to a question posed um to the Director of Legal Legal Aid by Commissioner Bennett in relation to a proactive policy of removing offenders from residences. And I want to ask just a couple of questions in relation to the directors, the issues the directors identified.
Yes, well, I would ask you to be uh as brief as possible.
I will, Chair.
And uh I'm not sure we need to hear details about amendments to the legislation since we're usually able to read legislation ourselves. But uh let's let's see, there you go. Okay.
Yes, thank you. Um Commissioner, in relation to the scope of the act, um it's been identified that there is a that the definition of family relationship is is limited, and there are um pres- amendments are being pursued. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Um and what's motivated them is a particular decision. Um, and what's motivated them is a particular decision last year.
That's correct.
Uh, would it be fair to say that in practice until that decision, um, the limitations have not uh, flowed through to the practical application of the Act?
That's correct.
And that regularly family, police family violence orders have been made in circumstances that perhaps strictly don't fall within it.
That's correct.
Thank you. Now, in relation, Commissioner Bennett asked the Director of Legal Aid, I think you were here at the time, a question about, um, Victoria Police in particular taking a proactive, uh, approach to removing offenders from homes. Um, is it your understanding, uh, that that's been the case since the commencement of the Act here?
That's correct. In fact, uh, it's to be fair to say that, uh, I think Victoria, um, looked at their model, uh, and adopted their model about, uh, removing the offender from the home.
Yes. And a police family violence order, you can, they ca- require an offender to vacate premises, not irrespective of their legal or equitable interest?
That's, that's correct. The lease can be varied by a court.
Yes, but a, a police officer can make an order, yes, thank you. Now, in relation to, um, uh, Mr. Cattabelliano's statement, um, this issue about mis- um, identifying offenders, that's something that occurs at large, not strictly speaking in relation to disabilities.
That's correct.
But there may well be a heightened risk.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah. And that's something police are conscious of?
Uh, very conscious of those situations.
And, and inspectors of police have a power to revoke, uh, police family violence orders upon review?
Yes.
And do so regularly?
Yes, they do.
And there's also a right of review to magistrate?
That's correct.
Yeah. Now, um, in relation to the particular matter and, um, upon close analysis, the matter raised at paragraph forty-nine doesn't, um, referred or suggests that police were involved in that. Um, but is it, is it true that you're very concerned about the matter raised referred to at forty-seven?
That's, you're very concerned.
And that, um, if you get some information that enables you to identify the police officers, you will follow it up from a professional standards point of view?
If that's, um, um, deemed to be, uh, correct, uh, yes, we'll definitely follow it up from a, uh, investigation point of view.
And, and because of a particular, um, tragedy that occurred here, police have, um, a particular approach to firearms offences and threats of violence?
Yes, very much so.
Very much a proactive policy.
Very much so.
Um, and finally, um, the policies, practices and training of Tasmania Police are constantly under review?
Yes, they are.
Um, and you would welcome, um, any deficiencies that commissioners can identify?
Definitely.
And, and certainly any recommendations?
Definitely.
Yes, thank you. I've nothing further. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you again, Commissioner, for giving evidence. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Uh, Ms. Mason, do you wish, uh, to, uh, have a, a shorter adjournment? If so, for how long?
Uh, I do. I first want to deal with the tenders of the documents and items concerning the commissioner's evidence. Can I do that first, please?
Yes, you can do that now.
Uh, so there's a, a number of documents. If you could receive the commissioner's statement into evidence and mark the statement as Exhibit seventeen point thirty-one point one. And then there's the annexes and accompanying materials, which I think, Chair, you've got a list and that would.
Yes, I think, I think we can do it from the list. So the, the statement of Commissioner Hine will become Exhibit seventeen point thirty-one point one. And the other documents identified in, uh, the index to tender bundle C, uh, will become, uh, seventeen point three, one point two through to seventeen point three, one point seven.
Thank you. And, uh, it may be that we will ask the Commissioner or Mr. Miller to provide us with an update of any steps taken by the Commissioner to follow up the matters identified in paragraph forty-seven of Mr. Cattabelliano's statement. Um, so we may do that and include that in the directions later today. Uh, Chair, perhaps if we can have a, a morning tea adjournment now for twenty minutes. And I think we'll still be on time. Our next witnesses are three, uh, managers from the NDI who are joining us by video link, as I understand it, either from Sydney or Canberra or a combination of both.
It's all right. Well, uh, we'll take, uh, an adjournment until, if we can make it twelve forty, as Sydney of Hobart time and eleven forty Brisbane time, we'll resume this, Ben.
Thank you.
The Royal Commission gives adjournments. The Royal Commission is resumed. Yes, Ms. Mason.
Uh, we're joined by a panel of three managers from the NDI who I hope the commissioners can see on the screen. And, uh, all of our witnesses have given their affirmations. So Chair, unless you've got some, uh, opening remarks for the witnesses, I'll ask them each to identify themselves. But you may want to just let the.
Yes, I'll just, uh, I'll just thank, uh, it's, uh, Mr. Bennett as well and Ms. Neville for attending the Royal Commission and giving evidence today. We appreciate your assistance and we appreciate the response, uh, to the notice you have a statement in writing that we have received and had the opportunity to read. Uh, to, just to ensure that you know where everybody is, uh, in the, uh, Hobart hearing room, we have Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner Mason. In the, in Melbourne, uh, the, the Commissioner Gell Bailey is joining us from that city. And I'm in the City Hearing Room and, uh, Ms. Mason, who will be asked to use questions, is in the Hobart hearing. So I'll now ask Ms. Mason to, uh, approach some questions.
Thank you. Um, can I start with you, Ms. Wheeler? You're Claire Wheeler.
Correct.
And you're the Branch Manager, Service Guidance and Practice with responsibility for service practice guidance, including standard operating procedures, work practices that set the parameters of frontline national delivery and enabled delivery of intention. Is that a description of your, uh, title and, uh, your role?
That's right.
Can I ask you, have you completed the Family and Gender-Based Violence Prevention E-Learning Modules referred to at paragraph forty of the statement?
I have.
When did you do that?
Um, I did it, um, around about twelve months or so when, um, when the module was first launched. Um, and then I did a refresher in preparing for the hearing today.
And have, um, so you did a refresher for today's purpose? And have you completed any of the other courses that are referred to in paragraph forty-one and forty-two of the statement?
I'll just check this thing and thank you. I haven't done those, no.
Uh, Ms. Neville, uh, I think it's a welcome back to the Royal Commission. You provided a statement for the Royal Commission for Public Hearing fifteen back in June twenty twenty-one, is that right?
Yes.
And you are the General Manager of Government with responsibility for NDIS Governance and Advice, including work programmes with the NDIS Quality and Safety Commission, focusing on participant safety, is that right?
Um, broadly, yes.
Is there anything I've missed in that description?
Um, no, no, that's fine.
Have you completed the Family and Gender-Based Violence Prevention E-Learning Module referred to at paragraph forty of the statement?
No.
Have you completed any of the courses referred to at paragraph forty-one and forty-two of the statement?
No, I have not.
Mr. Bennett, you are the General Manager, Policy Advice and Research. And you have responsibility for policy relating to participant cohorts and population groups, including policy on participant safety. Is that right?
That's correct.
And have you completed the Family and Gender-Based Violence Prevention E-Learning Module referred to at paragraph forty of the statement?
I have not.
And have you completed any of the training, um, courses available described at paragraph forty-one and forty-two of the statement?
I have not.
You, as I understand it, the statement which has been provided to the Royal Commission dated the second of March twenty twenty-two is, uh, a statement where each of you have had a role in drafting the statement, is that right?
That's right.
And the statement makes reference to two statements provided by Mr. Hoffman to the Royal Commission, described in your statement as Statement One and Statement Two. Have you read Mr. Hoffman's statements?
Yes.
Yes. And do you have a copy with you? Copies of those statements with you?
I don't think so.
No.
Right. Uh, had you, have you had an opportunity to read Mr. Hoffman's statements before you came this afternoon to give evidence?
Yes.
Yes. Would you agree with me that, that there are substantial parts of your statement that are identical to Mr. Hoffman's statements?
Yes.
So, ca- just so we understand, are you able to assist us as to who has drafted this particular statement of the second of March? And whether that drafting involved taking parts of Mr. Hoffman's earlier statements and including them in this statement?
Um, so the, um, the senior officers involved in drafting this particular response are identified on paragraph one through one.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, uh, um, the statement prepared by, um, Mr. Hoffman was a point of reference, um, for drafting of this statement. So that's where the similarities come in. Specifically, um, in the early, uh, paragraphs of this statement, that alignment is, um, provided.
Uh, I have asked Mr. Hoffman about matters which are in your statement that are identical to his statement provided as part of the Royal Commission's Public Hearing fourteen in Adelaide last year. And I asked him a number of questions about the, those paragraphs. Have you all had an opportunity to read the transcript of the examination of Mr. Hoffman with respect to those parts of your statement that are identical to his statement?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, all right. What I'm hoping to do is not to have to ask you questions that I've asked Mr. Hoffman. So I'll take it that you're aware of the questions that I asked him on that occasion.
Nodded.
All right, I can see you nodding, but if you're not sure, let, let me know as we go along. Now, in terms of the NDI, there's no designated gender specialist role, is there, in the NDI?
I, what do you mean by gender specialist role?
A person who has a designated role with specific functions and duties to look at gender, to bring expertise around gender in the overall operation and development of policies and practices in the NDI.
It is right to say that we, we don't have, uh, a specific gender strategy. Um, we.
I'm going to ask, sorry to interrupt you, I'm going to ask you about a strategy, but I'm asking you at this stage whether you've got, uh, well, I've put it to you that there is no gender specialist, designated position for a gender specialist in the NDI, is that right?
That would be correct.
And there's no designated family violence specialist in the NDI, is there?
Um, that's, that's correct, although we do have subject matter experts, particularly within our complex support needs pathway who, uh, have, have experience in family services and family violence services.
There's no standing advisory committee on gender issues in the NDI, is there?
Not specific to gender issues, um, although our independent advisory council has a reference group on equity and inclusion, um, of which obviously gender issues are an, an important part. Um, and they are, at the moment, providing us with advice on those matters that the agency is considering.
There's no sta- uh, standing advisory committee on family or domestic violence for the NDI, is there?
Uh, no, but however, there is, um, an established engagement model with, um, key representative organisations, um, such as Women with Disabilities Australia. Um, and, uh, it's also the case that at a intergovernmental level, we have, um, governance arrangements with, um, in particular, the voluntary out-of-home care system, um, and the child protection system.
And I think, Mr. Bennett, you just mentioned this, there's no NDI gender strategy, is there?
That is correct.
And you, the three of you, you're all aware, are you not, that the most common perpetrator of violence against women with disability is a former partner? You're aware of that?
Yes.
And for girls who experience sexual abuse, the perpetrator is most commonly a male relative, family friend, acquaintance or neighbour. Are you aware of that?
Yes.
And during the, uh, first part of the COVID pandemic, and it may be continuing, women with disability were at a significantly higher risk of the onset or escalation of violence being perpetrated by a current or former intimate partner. That was particularly so during the first three months of the pandemic. You're aware of that?
Yes.
Can, uh, any one of the, the three of you tell me how many NDIS participants are women or girls who are victim survivors of family or domestic violence?
We, we don't hold, um, data at that structured level, unfortunately. I can't give you that figure.
Why not? Why isn't there data?
Uh, we hold, um, we hold information about, um, uh, participant critical incidents of which, uh, family violence may form, um, a part. Uh, however, we don't have structured data according to that, um, particular category readily available. It's information that could be compiled, um, manually with, um, with, with appropriate time effort.
Does the NDI have a working definition that it uses for domestic or family violence?
Our staff, um, use a broad definition of risk and we look at a number of different risk factors. And we look at whether, uh, there might be particular, particular situational or personal factors that might make someone vulnerable at a particular point in time. Um, and that, of course, includes family violence indicators, um, as well as a number of other things as well.
But my question is not about risk or indicators, it's whether the NDI has a working definition of domestic and/or family violence.
Uh, I don't, I don't believe we do. However, um, we do, uh, we, we would commonly accept those definitions applied by family violence services.
What, and what are those definitions and which services are you referring to?
Um, well, I, I suppose I'm referring specifically to the, um, the, uh, the family services, the family violence services, um, of a specialist nature, uh, which are funded typically under, um, state territory government arrangements. Um, but also, uh, supported by appropriate national frameworks. Um, and we would apply the definitions that, um, are used in those frameworks.
So what definition would you use based on those frameworks in the NDI? How do you define domestic and family violence?
Um, I don't, I don't have the precise definition to hand. Um, however, we would, um, take the view, and this is somewhat reflected in our um, participant critical incident framework, that, um, uh, violence, abuse, neglect, um, uh, in, uh, informal, um, relationships, um, would be primarily how we would think about a family violence.
Right. Can I ask you, how many NDIS participants are women or girls who are victim survivors of sexual violence?
We would, uh, we don't have that information to hand. We would, uh, we don't have that information to hand.
Does the NDIS have a working definition of sexual violence?
No.
Has the NDIS commissioned any research to identify among the NDIS participants who are women and girls, those participants who may be victim survivors of family and domestic violence and/or sexual violence?
No, we have not.
Has the NDIS conducted any audit or review of its policies and practices to identify gender inequality in the NDIS?
No, not to my knowledge.
Is there a reason why that has not been done?
None, none that I can think of.
You've identified in the statement training, and I think Ms Wheeler, you've said you've done the training about 12 months ago and, and a refresher in preparation for today. So the statement identifies the description of the course Family and Gender-Based Violence Prevention E-Learning Module. Are we right in understanding that that's an online programme?
It is, that's right.
And how, what's the duration of it and what can you tell us about what's involved?
I think it takes, um, around about half an hour to work through. And there's some, some scenarios. And it's, um, there's some animations and some, um, scenarios about raising and speaking to someone who may be experiencing family violence using empathy and supporting someone to seek help and some interactive questions.
So that takes about half an hour to complete? Is there, is there a test at the end of it?
Yes. And as you work through, there are some interactive questions. And, and you know, those, you get, you get information about whether those answers are correct or not as you work through.
And that, this module's been developed by an external provider. I don't need you to identify the provider, but can you assist us as to whether the external provider has a particular expertise in the experience of women and girls with disability who experience family, domestic or sexual violence? Do you know who the provider is?
I do know who the provider is. I'm, I'm not sure of, um, the, the background or, and you know, the, how the course was developed and what sort of input that provider has had.
Do you know whether the module was developed by way of co-design with women with disability?
I don't know that.
Do you know if the module was developed or co-designed with victim survivors of family, domestic violence or sexual violence?
I don't know that.
Has that training, that particular module of training been evaluated in any way?
The agency keeps information, um, about feedback from our staff about whether they found the, um, the training useful. And we use that in continuous improvement of our staff training.
In that half-hour training module, are there trauma-informed approaches addressed?
I don't remember trauma and informed in there, no.
In the half-hour training, does it include training to address the experience of women and girls with disability from non-English speaking backgrounds?
Not specifically.
Does it include, in the half-hour training, the experience of women and girls who might identify as LGBTI?
Not specifically, no.
Does it cover First Nations women?
It doesn't.
The training, in terms of the training, we asked you about NDIS staff generally, and you've explained to us in the statement that staff could be a broad term. So you've covered different areas, both from people within the NDIA, but also the local area coordinators and planners. I'm just trying to sort of summarise very briefly. Is that a fair summary?
That's right.
It's a case, isn't it, that the training that you've done, you encourage the LACs and the planners to undertake this training, is that right?
That's right.
Does the NDIA keep a record of the number of LACs who've undertaken the training?
Those records will be kept by the partner organisations and then reported through to the NDIA.
And is that the same with planners as well?
Uh, yes, those are kept internally to the NDIA, yes.
And I hope I've read the statement correctly, but my understanding is that this is not compulsory training for the LACs or the planners, is that right?
Yeah, it's not part of the mandatory planner essentials training, no.
And in terms of that, that training, you might be able to assist us, having done, I think now twice, what are the risk factors that the training identified for NDIS participants who experience domestic, family or sexual violence? Can you list the risk factors for, for family violence for me?
Um, so the training talks really about, um, it talks about engaging and supporting someone who, um, who you believe may be at risk or experiencing family violence. It does talk about change in personality, change in mood, being very withdrawn. And, and you know, in an interaction with someone, how you might pick up some of those, um, flags and indicators of violence. So it's very much focused about how you might pick it, um, pick up risk in, uh, in a conversation or an interaction with someone.
Right. Is there a reason why this training is not mandatory for the LACs or planners?
The mandatory training for our planners and LACs focuses on their, um, their specific roles. So there's, the mandatory training isn't eight-week. And planner essentials training that people do when they first come into the role, that really goes through their, their role as a delegate or someone supporting, um, a participant to implement the plan. And really, the, the core processes of the role are covered in that, that training. So that would be about reasonable and necessary decision-making. And participant critical incidents, participant risk assessment is absolutely, um, core competencies and processes that are covered in that, um, in that training. That doesn't mean that that's the, the only training that's available to people. So generally, about 70 or 80% of the training that people do occurs after that training. There's training on the job and coaching, support. And we do have a continuous improvement training programme called Continuous Improvement Connect, which allows us to use data and information from the agency and to deliver particular training modules, generally on a monthly basis, which our staff work through. And again, they're, you know, they're very interactive and practical. So the mandatory planner essentials training looks at core processes and then there's other opportunities for, for continuous improvement.
Right. Now, can I ask you about the National Contact Centre? I think the website, your website says that the NCC is often the first port, point of contact and experienced participants or providers might have with the NDIS. So is it the case that the CIRCO staff at the NCC have the opportunity to undertake the training that you've described in the statement and the training you've just described in your oral evidence?
The module, yes, the NCC staff, NCC staff don't do planner essentials.
Okay. Oh, uh, much of your statement focuses on risk assessment. And if I can draw your attention to paragraph seven, and you've listed a number of methods, and you've provided to us the relevant attachments, and we've also, as I said, looked again at Mr Hoffman's earlier statements which addressed the same methods. Would you agree with me on this? Is that not one of the methods identify there expressly identify family or domestic violence as a risk factor?
Uh, that's right. The, what I would say is that the complex support needs pathway, as we ask our staff to look at indicators that might mean somebody needs to be referred through to complex support needs. Experience of family violence is a factor there. And of course, in participant risk assessment, also, we, we talk to staff about identifying risk in the home. Family violence would be one of them. So they're not, you know, they're not in the title, but absolutely in the materials, there is reference to family violence.
The focus is looking at risk in a very broad way, and there might be a range of risk factors. And I don't want to repeat what I asked Mr Hoffman about vulnerability and the vulnerable participants framework and the complex network pathways. But stepping back, for women and girls who are NDIS participants, who might in their domestic arrangements, be it whether they live with their families, whether they live in group homes or attending day programmes, is there's not a tool there that's very specifically designed to identify risk factors around family violence? So for example, there's not a tool to help planners identify practices that might have the character of grooming or coercive control. Do you agree with that?
I, I do agree specifically for family violence, although there are questions about potentially coercive control or financial control in the participant risk assessment.
Would you agree with this proposition that the NDIS participants are lot, more likely to be the victims of violence? The factors that are set out in these risk assessment tools do not make any assessment of the risk of the perpetrators of violence. And I'm probably not expressing it well. The focus is on the victims, but not on the indicators of family violence in terms of the way in which, and I'm not trying to be sexist in any way of saying this, but by far the perpetrators are men. There's no focus on the perpetrators within the domestic settings of the NDIS participant to look at family violence from the perpetrator perspective. Does that make sense? Do you agree with that?
It does, thank you. And the, the questions that we ask in participant risk assessment and also in, in developing a participant's plan in our check-in conversations, really explore the participant's home and living situation. So we will absolutely talk to the participant, for example, about, um, how they manage their finances. And we will look at particular spending patterns in their plans. So, um, you know, if there, if there are, if suddenly supports stop being claimed or if, um, if personal care supports or capacity building supports that generally occur in the home stop happening, or if there are barriers to, to citing the participant or being able to hear their views in a conversation with them, then those would all be risk indicators that our staff would pick up.
If the staff picked up those risk indicators, what do they do?
So generally, what would happen is that they would refer for advice. So if a staff member had had a conversation either in person or over the telephone, and they were concerned about either something that the participant had said, some information they'd gathered, or if they felt that they had not heard the participant's voice, and, or that maybe somebody who is acting for the participant was not acting in their best interests. And then they would generally escalate for advice, either from a team leader, from the complex support needs pathway, and, and look at how we could contact and make appropriate referrals and take the right action. If we believe that a participant is at immediate risk, then of course that would involve contacting emergency services and making sure they are safe.
I want to ask in a moment about those critical or acute situations. But just say, in the course of a plan review, if a planner asked a participant, are you safe at home? And the participant said, no, I don't feel safe at home. Nicole Lee has said to us earlier this week in evidence that she would not be confident that the planner would know what to do or what referrals to make. What do planners do if they're told by a woman that she does not feel safe at home? What, what do you expect them to do immediately?
Absolutely. So immediately, depending on who's part of that conversation and how that conversation is occurring, and we would make sure that the participant is safe. And we would talk through, and we would ask why the participant doesn't feel safe. And they may or may not be comfortable to do so, of course. And the participant risk assessment, if we identify, you know, if you, if you had an answer to the question that indicated the participant wasn't safe, the participant risk assessment tool does guide you through looking at exploring what the safety risks are, if there are ways to mitigate those risks. And if there are not, then to, to seek appropriate referrals, that might.
If, if the participant said, I don't feel safe, why would the planner then ask them why they didn't feel safe? That seems to suggest that the planner would interrogate the basis of their feeling. Wouldn't, would you not just accept it on face value? Why do you need to ask them why?
Risk to participant safety would be considered a critical incident. And the, the responsibility of the person who first becomes aware of that critical incident and risk to safety is to, to gather the right information.
What information are they gathering?
So that they would be asking the participant about their home and living situation and, and exploring the, the risks and any strategies to mitigate. Of course, in lots of situations, the participant doesn't feel comfortable to discuss. So they would note, they would note the concerns. They would arrange to, to follow up, absolutely immediately escalate for, for further advice. And, and you know, that, that would involve potentially looking at referrals to, um, would look at referrals to family violence services or to, to, to the emergency services if we believe that the participant's not safe.
Alright, well, let, let me then go to the acute or critical situation. You've said in the statement, this is paragraph 119, 120, there's a dedicated webpage. We've had a look at that. It says Family Violence Support NDIS. And the front of the webpage gives you two options. One is to click through Welcome to Disability Gateway. And the other is to click through to a programme that focuses on why men engage in violence. When, have you looked at this bit of the website?
Yes.
When you click through the disability gateway, there's nothing on the front of the disability gateway that mentions violence in terms of family or domestic violence. You're aware of that?
Yes.
Has anyone reviewed this webpage in terms of the two pathways that are open to see if they are actually relevant to domestic and family violence?
I'm not sure if that's happened, um, within the agency. That's not in my own responsibility, so I can't speak for, for whether those have been reviewed recently.
I, I would follow up by saying that I, I believe that webpage was quite recently refreshed. I think there's actually a, a refresh, a refreshment date on the, on the website.
I looked at it this morning, just to make sure I was up to date.
I, I believe it was refreshed a number of days ago.
Then, other than that initial pathway to the gateway, then there's just a list of telephone numbers, which look like the telephone numbers that the Royal Commission provides for content warnings. 1-800 RESPECT, Lifeline, those types of numbers. And then there's a really long list that sets out on a state-by-state and the territory local numbers for police or other services. That's all I could find on the webpage about where I go as an NDIS participant or even a supporter to assist an NDIS participant to understand what's available in a situation of to assist an NDIS participant to understand what's available in a situation of family violence. Can you tell me whether there are any other sources of information that are available to NDIS participants who may be in these acute or crisis situations where they might go to the internet to look for information, but what where else and what else can they find?
Uh. Participants or their supporters can get that information by contacting the NDI. So absolutely, um if um if someone was to contact us um by whatever means, either through to the contact centre or through a local area coordinator or support coordinator. Um. Then there would be an immediate response to to make sure that the participant or the person um was supported to to make the right referrals, to get the right support. Um. And of course, that would um that would then lead to our staff following the participant critical incident process.
There's no designated hotline where there's a one-stop shop for women and girls to call if they're experiencing family violence through the NDI, is it?
The um the contact centre is absolutely the um the single point of contact to the agency. Um. And if people contact um the one eight hundred number, the National Contact Centre, then staff have the right information um to pass on to the participant and to take the right action.
But I'm not asking about the general number, but a number which might even be different that women and girls can use that number safely. One place knowing that whoever is on the end of the line will be able to give them the advice about where to go and what they need to do specific to the NDI. That doesn't need to be suffered.
Uh. I I might, I guess, say by respond by saying that the one eight hundred number for our contact centre is intended to respond to um a large variety of circumstances for participants. We have a um uh an IVR option, which is basically a kind of a a call um answering service, which allows participants to it's not it's not a not a long laboured message, but it allows um participants to identify if their circumstances are urgent. Um. And the obvious dedicated referral um service would be the one eight hundred respect service, and that would be where that person would be pointed to if uh emergency services weren't the more appropriate response.
Is it the case that the expectation based on what's on the website is that the first port of call is not actually to the NDI at all, but to contact police or ambulance emergency services? That's the starting point. Is that right?
I think that's reasonable insofar as if if we're as seeking to ascertain if the person's circumstances are urgent. Um. As we've heard from um police today, they're very skilled in their call centre operations to determine the urgency of um the matter. So um we we point to the emergency services in the first instance.
In in that crisis situation, for example, if police intervene, we've heard today in Tasmania, there's an integrated approach and that the police would have a role in referring for various services, be it health or housing or otherwise. Does the NDI have any network in to the police or emergency health services, for example, that on presentation, the woman or girl is identified as an NDI a participant, NDIS participants? And that there would be some immediate action or support triggered within the NDI in that acute situation? That would require a link in, would it not, with the local state or territory police service or ambulance service? There's no alert system to connect straight in, is there?
There's no shared um there's no shared data or alert system, but what our um certainly our local area coordinators, um they're employed by the agency um in a number of locations. And the reason um that they're employed is for their established local networks and local local links um and the relationships that that they build. So local area coordinators are absolutely linked into the right services. They would have um established relationships with family violence services, for example, and and a whole range of community and mainstream services locally. Um. And that's how um generally those those responses, um if if somebody contacted a family violence service and it became apparent that they were an NDI participant, then um we would, what would generally happen is that that service would support them to contact the NDI and bring um bring the person who is helping them to implement that plan into the conversations and into the response.
Right. There's no NDI funded emergency assistance for a a woman or girl participant to have support in these crisis or acute situations, is there?
There's no separate crisis service within the NDI, but part of our response to an acute and a critical situation would be to make immediate support available. Um. And that might include um additional personal care supports if um someone has left their home or if um a family member or a perpetrator has left their home and they've been relying on that person for informal supports. Um. We can absolutely make very short term and very immediate um changes to the participant's plan um very quickly.
When you say.
I might just add, if that's okay, to say that um although we don't have an emergency management function specifically for this circumstance, we do have an escalations function. Um. And and the escalation staff would perform the duties that um Claire referred to earlier.
When uh Ms. Wheeler, you're you're making reference to that, how long does that take to have that immediate support? Does that occur in twelve to twenty-four hours of an acute situation?
Absolutely, it can do. So the escalations um framework and generally in um if there's an acute and critical family violence situation, if there's an immediate risk to the participant, then it would absolutely be a same-day response.
How uh do you have any data on the uh same-day response rates? So do you collect data on circumstances where the same-day response has been required and the NDI has provided that support? How many women in the last, say, financial year have had the benefit of that speedy escalation and support, say, in twelve to twenty-four hours?
I don't have that information, um but we could follow up to see if it's available.
Uh. It I don't know if you do keep that information, but if you do, could you let us know?
Yes, we will.
Well, I think we what from what we've heard is that the process of having assistance requires the victim of family violence to have to contact the NDI and ask for uh a change or an alteration to her plan. And that that may take quite a deal of time. Uh. As we understand it, that's not common that the response be in twelve to twenty-four hours, but it could take a number of weeks. Is that more likely the experience of somebody who was seeking to have uh specific assistance, but would have to make an application to alter her plan?
The um timing for plan reviews and and working through an appropriate response is obviously a a case-by-case decision. And we use our risk assessments and our escalations matrix um and the approach um of working with other agencies um at looking at whether there are short-term um or medium to longer-term changes that need to be made to the plan. Um. Absolutely, if it's an immediate response, it's required, that's available. Um. Sometimes um supports um need to be put in place over a much, much longer period of time. So it would absolutely be on a case-by-case basis.
Right. Uh. My look, my final question just comes back to paragraph four of the statement. And you make a reference there to the Applied Principles and Tables of Service. And when we've looked at the particular principles identified there, there's not a standalone principle dealing with family or domestic violence. That's right, isn't it? Isn't it?
Uh. That's that's correct. This particular um paragraph is referencing um the uh the language of the um Applied Principles and Table of Supports, which Specialist Family Violence Services um is uh included within the Child Protection and Family Support Service System.
Yep. So if we if we find it in a a different area rather than standalone, is that right?
Um. Insofar as the um that that's correct, insofar as the this particular um uh policy reflects multiple service systems, all service systems with which the NDIS would interact. So it's quite a um, I guess, a macro policy statement.
I I'm very conscious of time and I know the commissioners may have questions. Uh. I did want to ask about nominees, but thank you for providing a a fairly comprehensive overview of the situation of nominees, particularly if the nominees might be engaged in perpetrating violence or abuse. So I thank the panel. Uh. Commissioners, you have the more detailed statement. Chair?
Yes, thank you very much. Um. Commissioner Galvall, do you have any questions?
Um. No, thank you for your responses and no questions. Thanks.
You. Commissioner Mason?
Uh. Just one quick question. I'm always interested in uh recruitment and retention of First Nations people in organisations. Um. Just was interested in the numbers of First Nations people working within the NDI. Um. Particularly at a senior level, um who have that responsibility and influence in relation to uh improvements. I um I did, yeah, I did read previously.
On notice. I'm sorry, we don't have that data point with us, but we do measure it.
Yeah, I did notice previously there was, I can't re- recall the exact title, but around an Indigenous champion. What's that effect? Um. I'm just interested in in that level of um s- subject matter experts. That'd be fantastic. Thank you. And also thank you for giving your evidence today.
Happy to provide that.
Commissioner Bennett, do you have any questions?
Um. I have uh two questions. I I am. Ms. Eastman sort of talked about your call centre exchange, and you know, uh and often a first point of contact. Do the call centre staff have comprehensive detail on specialised services on a state-by-state basis? Um. And do they have skills and training where they're able to assist, connect that person to that service um to provide them the assistance they might need? Is there a a updated and current directory? Is there information that is on a state or in a local area basis where they might be? Do they have it at their fingertips the moment someone rings them? Uh. Rings you maybe as the first point of contact?
Absolutely. There's a referral directory that our contact centre staff have, um and that's continuously updated. So that has um the local um referral agencies. What is much more likely to happen if that person is a participant of the NDI than either their LAC or their support coordinator or their planner uh would be contacted to support them to contact those services. So it would be um it wouldn't generally be our practice that we would hand out um a one eight hundred number um and provide no further support.
And how quick I've got, how quick is that link from that phone call to the lack or the planner?
Um. In the in a family violence since in instance, which would be a part participant, critical instance, it would be um it would be same day.
And did you see the appearance of um Ms. Lee?
Yes.
She talked about where her circumstances had changed and her um abusing partner had left the relationship. And it took, um I I think, if I've got it right, at at least six weeks before her services um were changed. And she was very reliant on her child to fill the gap of um, which was not funded, but her partner providing some care or support. And I want to go back over what Ms. Eastman said, and it's set out in your plan reviews. And I'm trying to work out, even in the best scenario, how long it takes for someone that is in a crisis situation where their circumstances have changed to actually get, it says up to fourteen days to conduct a review, but you've said that uh there might be prioritised. That's even agreement to do a review. Then um someone does the plan review, and I assume there's approval process of a new plan. And then following that, they would be either funding all services to follow and to be joined up. Um. If you can't comment, I'd really like some information about how long it's taking to uh respond to a crisis change of circumstances on average.
But in um in a situation, um again, where there's um, you know, an acute and an immediate need and an immediate risk to the participant because um either supports are no longer available, and that might be because um it's of a family violence situation or other circumstances. And then our planners can make immediate response, and that's part of our critical incident framework. So once we've established safety for the participant, then um our next step is to look at what immediate support the participant might might need, and that might be immediate changes to their plan on the spot. Um. And it might mean that we need to replace um informal supports that have been providing personal care in the home, for example. Um. And and then there would be um a period where we would engage with um the right agencies um and establish longer-term um a sort of medium to longer-term plans in terms of home and living situation. Um. Support to find additional accommodation or support to bring um additional supports into the home. Um. So generally, in a in an acute situation, we wouldn't wait for um fourteen days to do a plan review.
So the capacity is to actually respond immediately if needed?
That's part of our critical incident framework, yes.
I might add, in addition, there were some changes that have come through in the bill that was recently passed around plan variations, which would enable the agency to um add uh supports or funding into plans immediately um uh of our own discretion and without the requirement of a full plan review, uh which would support the sorts of circumstances that Ms. Wheeler is talking about.
Ms. Eastman, is it okay if I ask them to provide information on um how many times have you um responded to an immediate change and how was it immediate or was it a week later or what the timeframes of what immediate actually is?
Yes, I I think I've asked about the twelve to twenty-four hour.
Yep.
If if there's border information as well.
I I wanted to know how many times has a decision been made to do that? Um. And then um how quickly were you able to respond to make the changes that were needed?
I think if I think, I'm sorry, I think if they were going to ask for the information, that's fine, but I think it should be formalised in a way.
Well, I'll leave it up to I'll leave it up to council to work out.
Pinpoint the questions we're asking, the information that is needed, the time period and so on. It's very difficult to do that, I think.
Okay, thank you. I think there's provision in the directions for that to be done, so.
I'll leave it for senior council to um organise.
Very good. Well, thank you. Thank you very much. Um. I I just have one question. The thrust of the questioning from Ms. Eastman is to the effect that the the NDI uh doesn't have a lot of specific policies dealing with domestic violence perpetrated on NDIS participants, family violence, so forth. Um. I would like to understand how far up hip and toe uh it is the consequence of. I would like to understand how far up, if at all, it is the consequence of the NDIA's perception or understanding of the ATTOs principles that has led to these gaps? Would you care to comment on that?
I guess I'm, my, my view would be that the NDIA has been focused on building staff capability on core processes that will address a wide variety of circumstances involving participants who are vulnerable or at risk, and trying to work on those processes, those tools, for, for a wide variety of circumstances. And that's probably where the energy's been going at this time, less, less so into, you know, particular, particular circumstances or cohorts, I would put it that way.
If I may.
Do I take it, do I take it, sorry, do I take it from that answer that it is not the ATTOs principles that present an obstacle to addressing the issues that Ms Eastman has raised with you? It's really a question of priorities and addressing what the NDIA considers to have been the core issues. And then over a period of time, it will get to other issues such as the ones that have been identified, that-
I would say that, that broadly, that is, that is accurate interpretation. And I would further add that there is another principle, overarching principle over the ATTOs, which talks about the need for seamless interactions between service systems and a no wrong door approach. And the NDIA is progressively working with other governments to put in place governance arrangements that better support their interactions with, with, with service systems at that sort of governmental level, if you like. But it's, it's also the case that the agency recently published our, our tender, a new tender opportunity or a tender opportunity involving engagement of partners in the community. And within that tender, it makes quite clear that we will be expecting partners to provide more in the way of information and referral and linkage, as was always intended in the original design of the scheme. And we will be taking back from planners, sorry, rather, taking back from partners responsibilities around building the plan, bringing those back into the business so that partners, who are a key part of our operating model, are able to perform information, linkage, referral in a more sophisticated way.
And we have, Chair, also-
I think, I think Mr Bennett was wanting to say something.
I was, I was, just to add to that, that we have, albeit briefly, in our submission at paragraphs 125 and 126, talked about some of the work that we are doing, not specific to family and domestic violence, but more broadly looking at participant safety, which refers to our development of a, an overarching participant safety policy that will bring together all of our existing policies, practices and protocols into one place. And we're committed to doing that work in co-design with the disability community. It reflects a priority that was jointly identified with many of our key stakeholders, with our independent advisory council and disability representative organisations, including Women with Disability Australia. And we'll begin with a series of workshops from May that reach out very broadly to hear from participants, families, carers, other stakeholders about any improvements that can be made in our identification and support of participants who are potentially vulnerable or at risk. And we anticipate a, a significant gender lens on that process. And we'd be very happy to update the commission at some future stages to the progress with that work, which we expect to be concluded by the end of this calendar year.
Yes, thank you. I'm sure that Ms Eastman will take note of that and will follow that up in, in due course. But the message, and I just want to make it clear that I've understood it correctly, the message I would take away from what we've been discussing is that if the Royal Commission were minded to make recommendations about the way in which domestic violence, sexual violence, family violence and the gender lens could be applied to the NDIA, there's no impediment to the implementation of that from your point of view, which is really just a question of the priorities that the NDIA has adopted, given the need to implement a very muted complex thing. Have I understood it correctly?
Yes, agree.
Chair, I've got one, one further question which arises from Commissioner Bennett's questions. And for completeness, I'd like to put this proposition to the NDIA. It would be possible, would it not, to include a participant service guarantee with clear timelines for victims of family and domestic violence as to when and how they can receive appropriate support? So in the same way you've got timelines presently there, there could be a very specific participant service guarantee for participants who experience domestic and family violence. Do you agree with that? That's possible?
Technically possible. I don't think it would be any different than what we currently have in place through our participant critical incident framework and the timeframes for escalation that have been described during the course of our oral evidence today. But, and obviously that would be a matter for, for government rather than for the, for the NDIA.
I accept that. I just wanted to, to raise that in terms of Commissioner Bennett's questions and my question about the data of the urgent response. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I'll just inquire whether the Commonwealth's counsel, Ms Morgan, has any application to make about asking any further questions? Is Ms Morgan with us?
Chair, you should be able to hear and see me now.
I can hear you, but I can't see you. But as long as I can hear you, we can carry on.
Certainly. Thank you very much.
Now, now I can see.
Thank you very much for the opportunity, Chair, but there are no questions that I need to ask the panel. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms Morgan. And thank you, Ms Wheeler, Ms Neville, Mr Bennett, for your attendance and for the information you've provided to the Royal Commission. We are grateful to you for your assistance to that work. Thank you. Ms Eastman, are you proposing that we should take a break now? Or do we proceed with tenders? Or how would you like to?
Well, Chair, there are the tenders for the NDIA. And I think, Chair, you may have a list. There's a number of documents, which starts with the Statement of the Second of March, if that could be received into evidence in Mark 17.32.1. And then balance of-
Sorry, that can be done. And then the other documents that are referred to, which actually have the numbers 10 to 19, they can also be admitted into evidence with exhibit number 17.32.2 through to 17.32.11.
Yes, thank you, Chair. There's some additional tenders, which perhaps I can do in chambers in relation to the material in Tender Bundle D. And Chair, for our part in Hobart, that concludes the evidence. I do not propose to make any closing submissions today, other than to say it's been somewhat challenging in Hobart. So we're pleased to have got to, to this point. But Chair, there are some directions we've asked you to make. And perhaps if I could ask you to make any closing remarks and to deal with the directions, and we may be able to conclude this hearing without the need for a break and coming back after lunch.
Yes, as, as long as my colleagues can manage to spend lunch for another few minutes, I think we can conclude. And then the lunch will be even more leisurely than otherwise, if that's the case. Ms Eastman, as far as you are aware, is there any disagreement with the proposed directions? Have they been distributed to the parties?
As far as I'm aware, they have been distributed to the parties yesterday, and there's no disagreement with the matters. And can I just say, Chair, before you read that, I think our colleagues from the NDIA can be excused. They don't have to listen to this.
It appears they have been excused because they've been removed from the screen. So I assume they, they have gone. All right. What I will do is read out the directions that I propose to make. I'll then pause for a moment to see if any party wishes to disagree with any of them. And if not, then they are the directions that can be taken as made for the purposes of concluding the additional work required for the hearing. The proposed directions are as follows. One, by 19 April 2022, witnesses who took questions on notice during Part Two of Public Hearing 17 are to provide their answers in writing to the Office of Solicitor assisting the Royal Commission. The answer should be targeted and concise and not address additional or unnecessary matters. Two, also by 19 April 2022, parties with leave to appear who wish to tender further documents into evidence are to provide those documents to the OSA, that's the Office of the Solicitor Assisting, for consideration by counsel assisting the Royal Commission. Three, by 27 April 2022, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will tender any documents into evidence in Public Hearing 17, including both Parts One and Two, the chief considers appropriate. Four, counsel assisting the Royal Commission will prepare written submissions following the hearing. By 17 June 2022, the OSA will make these written submissions available to parties with leave to appear at the hearing on a confidential basis. Five, by 15 July 2022, parties with leave to appear in Public Hearing 17 who wish to make submissions in response to counsel assisting's written submissions are to provide those submissions to the OSA. Any such written submission should be concise and should not include any additional evidence. So I'll just pause to see whether any party wishes to object to any of those proposed directions. There does not appear to be any objection. Thank you. In that case, they are the directions that I make and able to appear, no doubt copies if they're not already available, will be made available to the parties to appear. Ms Eastman, you've indicated you don't propose to make any closing remarks?
No, other than, Chair, just to thank all the witnesses who participated, and also to the members and representatives of the advocacy groups who have also had the opportunity to be with us in the hearing room in Hobart. We thank them for their attendance and participation. Thank you.
Thank you. I too would, on behalf of the commissioners, like to thank all of the witnesses who have given evidence at Part Two of Public Hearing 17. But particularly, we would like to thank the people with lived experience of disability who have been prepared during this week to share their experiences of family, domestic and sexual violence, as has, I think, been remarked on more than one occasion. It takes a great deal of courage and determination to describe those experiences in a forum and an environment such as a public hearing of a royal commission. And we are extremely grateful to the witnesses who have come forward, been prepared to share their experiences with us and with the community at large. The evidences Ms Eastman, Ms Drago and Ms Fraser frequently pointed out was often very confronting and very distressing. But that evidence is also exceptionally important. Part of the function of this Royal Commission, the core function, is to provide an opportunity for people with disability that have experienced violence and abuse in all of its forms, to bear witness to their experiences. We hope that this hearing has provided that opportunity to the witnesses from whom we have heard, and we hope that they've been able to do that through their statements, their oral evidence, pre-recorded interviews, and of course, the artworks that, that, one of which at least can be seen on the screen right now. We have listened very carefully to those stories. They will play a key part in formulating recommendations to address the policy issues that have been identified during the course of the hearing. And we also hope that the people who have shared their experiences so generously with us have found giving evidence not only to be worthwhile, but perhaps even liberating. I do want to share, on behalf of the commissioners, the comments made by Ms Eastman about the advocacy groups. I have not been involved in the detail of planning the hearing. Others have done that extraordinarily difficult and challenging task. But I am told, and I accept completely, that it would not have been possible without the contributions made by advocacy groups such as, uh, Wider. And we are exceptionally grateful also to the contributions they have made to the conduct of this hearing. It is an example of the cooperation and engagement that can take place in a most constructive manner between the Royal Commission and advocacy groups that have a great deal to offer to our work. It is critical to the work of the Royal Commission, as we have repeatedly said, that all of our engagements with people with disability are trauma informed. This is particularly the case where people are recounting their own experiences, which are often deeply traumatic. And I want to thank especially the members of the Royal Commission staff who provide support to witnesses at this hearing and to other, of course, so many other people with disability who engage with the Royal Commission. They have done a magnificent job throughout this Royal Commission, and their work is absolutely integral to what we do. And they have our thanks, and I'm sure they have the thanks of people who have given evidence at this hearing. As has been noted as we've gone along, this hearing, unfortunately, like a number of others, has had its challenges because of the disruptions caused by COVID-19. I don't, I won't go into the details. I just want to say that, again, the staff of the Royal Commission and Law and Order, which was affected by the, by the pandemic, have done an outstanding job in allowing us to continue with this hearing. It could, it was very close, I think, to getting to the point where we might have had to postpone, and that would have been exceedingly unfortunate, to say the least. And I do want to express our appreciation for the very flexible, very innovative and very constructive ways in which those who were faced with the challenges responded and allowed the hearing to take place. And finally, to all others who've been involved in preparing for this hearing, it cannot be said too often just how much goes into the preparation of a hearing such as this. It is a major, major effort on the part of counsel assisting, on the part of the Office of Solicitor assisting, policy people and all others who are involved in organising the hearing from beginning to end and dealing with the multitude of problems that arise. We thank them. We thank the interpreters for their excellent work. We thank those who are responsible for real time transcripts and everybody else who's contributed to this, this hearing. Because of the nature of the subject matter, I'm just going to ask the commissioners of the sitting, if there's anything that they would like to add, particularly to the people with lived experience given, who have given evidence. And I'll ask Commissioner Galvall, if you would like to, if there's anything you'd like to add, what I should-
Well, I'd like to endorse what you've said and add my thanks very deeply to all of the witnesses with lived experience especially, but also to the DROs and Wider and, you know, for assisting us so, so deeply in this, putting this together. And thanks also to all of the commission staff. I think it was incredibly adaptive and I've never seen anything like it really, the way people were able to be so quick footed around, you know, quite deep challenges. So thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Commissioner Galbally. Commissioner Mason, is there anything you would like to add?
Uh, yes, just echoing the thanks that you've given, Chair, as well as Commissioner Galbally. And particularly want to express my thanks to WIDA and WOD and all the organisations as well as the lived experiences, experience, witnesses and advocates and everyone who came. It's given a really broad cross section of the multi-layers of experiences of women and girls with disability and I'm most grateful. And I also echo conversations during the very difficult time during the week in keeping the, keeping the hearing in place so that we could really have that fulsome evidence provided to the Royal Commission. And my experiences with women's law is that the strength of working with a kind heart and kindness is critical to, not only to this work, but also to living in this country with so many multi-layers of history and experiences and people from, coming from all corners of the earth that live here. And those stories were heard this week as well. So I just want to say a big thank you to everyone for their sterling work this week. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bennett, would you like to add anything?
Yes, I'd like to add what a privilege it was and humbling to meet the women who had the courage to come and talk to us and tell us their experiences and to see the trust that they had in our staff and the support for them to be able to feel safe to share those experiences. I thank them deeply.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. That concludes this hearing. The next hearing will be Public Hearing 22. I appreciate that's not sequential from Public Hearing 17, but that's because we've had Public Hearing 18, 19, 20 and 21. Public Hearing 22 will deal with the experiences of people with disability working in Australian disability enterprises. That hearing will take place from Monday 11 April 2022 to Wednesday 13 April 2022. And that will be a vertical hearing primarily conducted from Sydney. Thank you, everyone, again. My pleasure. The Royal Commission is adjourned.